As our regular meeting, which we gabbled in earlier today, this morning, and then just had a great lunch with some of the legislative leaders and the state board. We're going to go right to public participation because we have a few of those and we want to honor our folks. And then we're going to introduce employees because they're here. And then we've got a special agenda adjustment that we're going to accommodate right after that. So, why don't we start with public participation, Merz?
Okay, I currently have two forms. If there are any other people that have forms, I'd be interested in receiving them, please. And these two people have requested to come to the board table together, although they will each be speaking for five minutes. So, they are Nancy Fauner and Amy Colton, if you'd like to come to the board table. I will close up the computer so it's not in your way. So, the timer will, I'll do five minutes per person, as is the board's custom, and they do not engage in a conversation, but they're happy to hear whatever did you have come to tell them. Ready? Yes, sir.
Hey. And we're really going to tag team here, so, well, State Superintendent Flanagan, members of the board, Mr. Whiston, and stakeholders. I'm Amy Colton. I'm Executive Director of Learning Forward Michigan. It's the state affiliate of the international organization, Learning Forward, used to be the National Staff Development Council. Our mission is to build the capacity of leaders, both teachers and administrators, to be able to design and sustain effective professional learning. And I'm here with...
I'm Nancy Fauner, and I'm the Executive Director of Michigan ASCD. And Michigan ASCD is an affiliate of the national office also, which is an international office too. Our mission is dedicated to excellence in learning, teaching, and leading, and we achieve that through our meaningful collaborations with others, supportive policies and practices, and products and services that help inform educational leaders.
So, we'd like to start by first commending the board. I know some of you were on the board back in January of 2012 for adopting the Michigan professional learning policy and standards. And by adopting those, we can see that the board really sees that in order to implement these new initiatives like college and career-ready standards, the new assessments, the teacher/educator evaluations, is going to require a new kind of professional learning, which is what is described in the policy and the standards. And that this will require professional learning that drives teaching and leadership for improved instruction. As active stakeholders, both our organizations were at the table for two years as this policy was being developed, and both our organizations are extremely committed to ensuring that every Michigan educator engages every day in effective professional learning so that every student will learn. For those new to the board, we wanted to give you a brief overview of those standards because those standards actually are, that you adopted, are internationally recognized. They were developed under the guidance of Learning Forward and involved professional organizations from across the country. And happy to say that the Michigan Department of Ed was one of the stakeholders that helped develop them. And they were being developed at the same time that we were working on the policy. So, does everybody have the quick reference? Because I'm going to walk you through this one. And the other thing that Learning Forward tells everybody, and I think is important, is that Michigan was one of, maybe the, might have been the first, if not the second, state board of ed to adopt these standards in the country. So, we're real proud of that as well. So, what I'd like to do is just quickly walk you through both the standards and then the theory of change that actually drives the standards. And these standards were developed as a framework for how one would implement, design, implement, and evaluate professional learning. You'll see at the top on the inside, there are seven standards. Each standard actually starts with professional learning that increases educator effectiveness and results for all students. And then it tells you what those various characteristics need to be, and all of these need to be implemented to get the intended results of a change in practice and student learning. If you look on the bottom right where you see all the circles, the theory underlying these standards is really important and is what we're really involved in, in helping people understand. So that if you look at Circle One, when the professional learning standards are standards-based, it has a great potential for changing educators' practice, knowledge, skills, and dispositions. That's if it's standards-based. And when that happens, if you look at the third one, when teachers and administrators develop a deeper understanding and a skill set, they actually are more of a repertoire to be reflective in meeting the learning needs of both the educator and the student. And when that happens, there's more likelihood that the professional learning is contributing to student results. And this theory is actually, also defines a continuous cycle of improvement that we want all educators to be engaged in.
So, our organizations have been working both independently using these standards and collaboratively using these standards, and we thought we'd give you a little snapshot about that today. Michigan ASCD offers comprehensive professional learning to inform and support leaders from both the teacher/leader level all the way to the superintendent level, if the superintendent has responsibilities for curriculum instruction and assessment. And so, one of the professional learning opportunities that we offer is our two-year Curriculum Leaders Institute. And it has been designed and realigned using the professional learning standards. So, we're holding ourselves accountable for professional learning that we're providing, that we're modeling this, of course. And then we explicitly teach the standards within that two-year program. So, I think it's in the second session, when we're working with curriculum leaders and we're talking about good school improvement practices, we introduce the standards because your professional learning should also be aligned to what your data says, but using good standards for professional learning. And the second year, we're expecting all those curriculum leaders of ours to be actually implementing these in their own school settings and actually learning through the modeled process. So, that's, I think, probably one of our strongest uses of them, and so many of the professional learning standards appear in their two-year change initiative that they implement in their particular district as part of this comprehensive two-year program. But besides their additional professional learning offerings that we offer in curriculum assessment and instruction, we really try to model by creating professional learning communities that are ongoing professional learning opportunities so people just don't show up for an event and then they go home. We really try to incorporate adult learning theory in the way that we design these very purposefully. What is this particular group going to respond to? We try to collect data to determine the participant needs, that this is a need in the state, this is a need in the particular county, we're customizing it because of this population. And we gather feedback on how well those professional learning opportunities we have given them has begun to change teachers' practice or their beliefs in such a way that's transferring to it being implemented in the classroom, which is beginning to impact student achievement. So, we're taking them very seriously and we're seeing results in using them. Collectively, our organizations, besides what we have done independently, have presented at three school improvement conferences over the last two years, and we've been talking about these particular standards, especially as they're applied to job-embedded designs for professional learning. You always get that question, well, how do you make this work within school settings? How do you make that work within a day's framework? And so, for the last three school improvement conferences, we have focused on that. We've also provided an overview of the standards and the theory of action to the Michigan Association of Administrators of Special Education. And we followed up that day with a full session on job-embedded professional learning upon request by their particular members. So, those are a few things we've been doing collaboratively across our organizations.
So, in the two minutes that remain, we also wanted to share our most recent collaborative initiative that we're just getting off the ground and will start this June. We have found many people in the field who are asking about collaborative inquiry, and the research really shows that collaborative inquiry is one of the most impactful ways to do professional learning. And this dates back to work on the Eisenhower Grants. And so, people are beginning to say they want to do that, they want to engage their educators in that. And what we're concerned about is that they won't be critical consumers, they'll just grab a model, and there are lots of models out there. So, we've decided to create a design team of different organizations, including MDE, a member from MDE, to explore what collaborative inquiry is, what the different models are, so that they will not only know what the different models and purposes are, but then can also decide which one is most appropriate for their context. And this really builds on some work that Learning Forward Michigan's been doing over the last few years, and that is, we've been engaging people in year-long collaborative inquiry, but we've also developed a teacher leadership program that the principals also attend to learn how to facilitate job-embedded collaborative inquiry in their schools. And as Nancy said, we're all seeing some incredible results. Teachers say that the cultures are shifting, that they see collective responsibility, that they feel empowered to guide their own professional learning instead of being told what they need, that they're really looking at immediate and relevant problems of practice so that they can address the needs that they have as well as the students on a regular basis. So, we're looking forward to working with others to develop some programs around that for the state. Thank you.
Okay. We just need to say thank you.
We'll let you say thank you.
Thank you.
It's beyond the time.
We appreciate the opportunity.
Thank you.
Thanks, Nancy. Thanks, Amy. You and your organizations just do exceptional work, and it's unheralded, so thank you for bringing some of that to our attention again today. I'm going to do my report because I can see that David doesn't have some of his team here yet. And let me just do my report, and then we'll...
Whenever you need to talk with us, you know, that's fine.
But are some on their way?
Yeah.
Are some on their way to join you?
Yeah.
So, let me just do mine, and then we can accommodate your timing. A couple of things I wanted to say, you heard me, I'm repeating myself, but it's new audience today. I mean, we really are lucky to have Brian coming on board in July with his kind of fresh perspective on local district issues, and he's a good person, smart, brings a lot of experience, so that's a great thing. I will say, the day he was appointed, the next day, Anna came up to me in the first thing in the morning, and she said, "Do you realize you were singing in the shower?" And I don't sing. And I thought she was kidding, and she said, "No, no, seriously." And I said, "Well, what was it?" She said, "I think it was the Who's 'I'm Free.'" Because I want to say this on behalf of Brian, I said, David knows, I said a little bit of this at the Ed Alliance yesterday, that when you're in the job, you can't whine. But it's the hardest job I've ever had, by far. And I think, I'm trying to say this so that Brian gets a fair shake, that it takes some time for a while just to understand the issues and to, you know, he's had tremendous experience in the field, there's still, it's a different world, you know? And as some of you said at the luncheon today, that there's a bunch of different folks involved. I mean, first and foremost is the state board. There's also a legislature and a governor. And then there's the field and the kind of things that they're actually dealing with. So, it's very difficult, and I still haven't developed thick enough skin because it's the nature of the job that you end up making decisions where often half the people are happy and half are not. So, over time, I used to say you lose about 10% of the people a year, and then I figured, okay, I've been here 10 years, 10%. So, thanks, the two of you that are left. But I really respect Brian and think he's going to do a great job. I wanted to give you a brief update on M-Step. Yesterday was the beginning of kind of our eight-week cycle. I didn't know if we would be responding to a bunch of bad news stories today, and we're not, you know? Things seem to be going really well. And this would have sounded a little defensive on our part, but we can only do so much. I mean, we're a local-controlled state. So, yesterday, I thought the NS Center team, breakfast to kick this off because our team has worked so hard on this for quite a while. It's the first year of this, and, you know, I think we should take a little credit as a team that we thought, we need to get this out of the way before a new person's on board. This was back a couple of years ago, knowing that you don't want in your first year to suddenly have to work out online testing, for example. We didn't know some of these other things would happen, such as not being able to continue with smarter balance. So, obviously, this team, I just owe the team downstairs in the second floor for the, to repeat again, that their work to pull this off after, pretty much, the rug was pulled out from under us last year when we weren't able to continue with smarter balance as such. That's the other reason we decided not to have any labeling this year, because you had MEAP last year, M-Step this year, and next year, the new test, three different tests. Having said that, I have to kind of say, it was curious to me that in certain pockets, there was so much concern about the testing because of all years, there's really no consequences for it, not to the degree that there'd been some hype. So, yesterday, we go down to the breakfast, and the irony is, by 8:00, 1,000 students were already on the system. I think one had completed midway through breakfast at 8:30. One kid had already completed. At the end of the day yesterday, we had 29,000 completed test segments, probably updated to what...
The midday update just now was 111,000 completed test segments.
111,000.
So, that'd be like taking the ELA portion. We tested five midday today, four times as many test sessions than we did all of yesterday. Very little technical challenges, so it is going well, and the team does deserve a lot of credit, so.
The team does. The team, the locals that have worked on this, I mean, I think it's really, hopefully it continues to turn out over the next few weeks, but this is, I mean, our folks, there's just no other way to say it, they worked tirelessly on that. This was something that we know is high stakes, obviously, and we know that even if a local district had some issues, it's probably going to be seen as the state issues, but we said, you know, let's just, we'll be big boys and girls about that and just let it go if that happens. I don't know if you've seen, I think we sent this to you, and if we don't, we certainly will start, but this has just started really because a lot of the tension in the field on, there's a special called Spotlight on Student Assessment and Accountability that comes out regularly from the department to the field. And I think it's gotten that and its hotline. I heard good feedback yesterday at the Ed Alliance about the hotline really working. Also, good feedback, by the way, and I told her this privately, but I can say this publicly, on the kind of work that Finesse has done with individuals and with boards out there to help them be a lot more comfortable about going into this testing season. And they just described her, won't even use the word rock star, so I think that was quite an honor to hear that, especially from this person. We'll go on name now. You know, the TRIG stuff that Kathleen brought up earlier today, working the TRIG project with ISDs around the state to ensure that we have what we call Tiger Teams on the ground so that they can go out and help with hands-on technical assistance if districts or schools need help with their technology. Probably some of that's already happening and will continue. I appreciate the ISD staff that are staffed pretty well stepping up on this also. Although there's been some angst and worry, a great deal of change, much of it, as you know, from outside of our control, this is really, I think, an exciting opportunity, transitioning to online assessment. It's a big and important step for our state. We've worked on this four years. You know, it comes, its culmination is now, but it's a four-year effort to get to this point. And remember, as I said, we're not using the results of these tests for high-stakes purposes unless a school or district fails to meet the participation targets, and even then, the consequences are somewhat unclear in the feds. But we hope, what we wouldn't want to be in a spot is where we think we're doing the fair thing by not having consequences, but then creating tension with the federal department and Army and others that somehow we didn't in good faith take these tests. So, that's attention, a little bit of attention. I know there's been a lot of talk about testing time. I think we made it clear last month, and we addressed this per Cassandra's point, I think we made it pretty clear that this is an unusual year because which law don't we follow? And next year, we'll go down because the college entrance exam aligns to the standards very well, so that time won't have to have other wraparound questions. It's less than 1% of the instructional time, but still important, I'm not minimizing it, but sometimes you read some of these articles and you would think it's something much more than that. And that's just for context. I mean, we all know, we get it more than anyone, assessment is not the end goal, but it is an important tool. And my daughter, a teacher, she went with me to go to the MCAN conference on Sunday because she's a halftime counselor, some of you know, and a halftime teacher, and, you know, they, assessment people understand is important to inform their instruction. So, I mean, a lot of this, I think we're getting to a better place. And then I thought I would just end, because I'm trying to think of a more innovative way, especially whenever I turn this over to Melody, and who's so creative in the way she bakes her presentation, and I'm just kind of verbally blah, blah, blah. So, this is my best attempt. It's not a lot. I mean, it's just, what I thought we'd do is just show, if you're not, if you're not following Twitter, it really is a pretty good way to communicate, and I use it pretty actively. These are just some examples this last month. And if anything, it highlights some of the things going on in our districts and other places. Okay, some of you were there. That was, okay. This was a sincere shout-out for Brian. I just think he does bring tremendous talents to this, and he got 33 retweets, eh? These are some of our folks that are presenting at McCall. And McCall, if you haven't been to the renovated Cobal Hall, oh my gosh, it's just, it's just something to be really proud about in Detroit. But our guys just represented us. Michelle is our new technology person, and I can't tell you how much praise we're getting from the field on this. She's a very well-established person, you met her in an earlier meeting, worked in the UP for years, and the UP has really led the state in a lot of this interactive and technology-driven thing. So, she, they were just praising her in this very session where I was sitting in the back of the room. This is where I did a Prop One thing. I found out I did it illegally a little bit because I need to be more careful and say that I'm as a person voting for Proposal One, which I've just said, but I've got to be more clear as state soup, you can just present the facts, I guess. This is really an outstanding place. I, you know, you know, you just heard at our legislative lunch, if I may, since you brought it up, Lupe, but your background and coming here as a migrant worker, and then finding out in this particular case, here's one of the aberrations of reform. We brought a few of these to your attention in the past. This one was a new one to me, which is that our migrant children come in in the beginning of the year and then leave, kind of know this intellectually, and then come back to take tests. And then people in the system are held accountable for things that they maybe don't even have anything to do with. So, it's one of the quirks in this evaluation thing that we need to continue to work on, but just do outstanding work. This was not only a nationally-recognized school, this is one of our beating-the-odds Went to that, saw the big shot at the high school basketball championship, I guess that was, and a couple of weeks ago.
Western International.
Went over, coincidentally, the same day, a Saturday, they asked if I'd speak to some of the teacher candidates at MSU. We've got a lot of good people in the pipeline, that's excellent. You're grad, are you not, Melody?
I'm sure you am.
My daughter also.
Yeah.
So, that's my feeble attempt at some kind of looking like I know technology a little And then just last, I thought, with one of the, the senator, I think it was heartfelt, he brought something up at our lunch that I think is genuinely the perception that somehow we're not Tennessee and we're not Massachusetts and we're... You know, our teachers have moved the graduation rate to 77%, the highest of all time, it's been consistently rising, even in spite of the Michigan merit curriculum where everyone said the whole world was going to collapse when that happened. Our teachers have moved dropout rates down 33%. Our teachers and the whole system has moved, last year alone, the ACT scores went up 15%. And then finally, I think the one that maybe this department, as much as teachers in the field, deserves some credit on is third-grade reading proficiency. It was about 50%, and now it's a two-thirds of the kids reading a grade level in a relatively short period of time. And as you know, that's kind of the key stat, if we can get kids reading it. In fact, on family Facebook last night, they were making a joke about one of my grandkids, and I said, "As long as he's reading at third-grade level, by third grade, I'm good." They didn't laugh, they didn't know exactly what the heck I meant by that. But it's such an important mark, and I appreciate the progress that's been made. So, we're going to stretch this out a little bit more with David.
They're downstairs, they're on the way.
Okay, then maybe we'll do employee participation, employee introduction, save Melody for after that so she has enough time, but why don't we do that first, and then we'll move on.
So, I've had a chance to meet with some of these people here who are joining our staff, and I would invite them to stand and tell you a little bit about what they're doing and where they're working. First, with Mohamed Sadek.
Mohamed Sadek, I'm in the Office of Career and Technical Education with the GAME Unit, Grants, Assessment, Monitoring, and Evaluation Unit. Mainly, some of my duties includes developing, processing, and administering requests with proposals. And also, I'm the department lead and liaison for the NextPlus, which is Michigan Electronic Grant System.
Thank you. And would you like to work in the GAME unit? That's a good one. Leanne Reyes, also with CTE.
Good afternoon. Leanne Reyes, I am Office of Career and Technical Education. I'm not in the FUN unit, I'm in the other unit, I see her, you've written in this unit, but it's a pretty great team. I'm the Secretary. And then finally, for CTE, Leanne, Mary.
Mary Stevenson. Hello, I'm Mary Stevenson, I'm the Executive Secretary for the Office of Career and Technical Education.
We placed a 30-year veteran, 30-plus-year veteran.
Forty-plus. That doesn't tell you something about that from...
And then finally, for me, from the Office of Field Services, is Alexandra Holmeyer.
Hello, I'm Alexandra Holmeyer, I'm currently working as a student assistant. I'm helping with process improvements and department-wide initiatives within the Division of Education Services.
And I introduced Scott briefly earlier, but I would like to reintroduce Scott Conning from the Office of Standards and Assessments. Can you tell us a little about yourself?
Thank you. Well, I'm your Social Studies Content Lead for Assessments, so Standards and Assessment is the office I work in, and we're crossing fingers and manning the phones, and everything has been going really well, and we're very pleased with where we're at progressively within the assessment piece right now. Thanks for welcoming me.
Would you all, please welcome our new folks. I did forget to mention, I know I told you I was singing in the shower, apparently, but my first week of retirement, my wife surprised me yesterday because she knows since I was a kid, I'm this old, that my last day as a teenager, I literally spent at Woodstock. You can figure out the math here. And, but she has gotten, at Comerica Park, she's gotten two pretty good seats at Rolling Stones concert my first week.
Oh, wow.
So, I'll be the hippie in the audience in August, so, there. So, why don't we, we amended the agenda, John did this today with, we all did this, but it was suggested by Michelle earlier today, so maybe, would you like to give a preview to this, Michelle?
Well, as probably many of you know, the, it's been a group of folks meeting in Detroit to try to improve the education, in the future of education for Detroit schoolchildren, so it's the Coalition, for the future of Detroit schoolchildren. And it's an incredibly diverse group, I'm sure, I'm sure all of you have read about it in the newspapers. And they have been working hard, I've been on the Policy Subcommittee, but the Steering Committee has especially been working long hours and very hard on this with lots of, in a very difficult, sometimes very difficult climate, but I think it was so diverse that it brought a lot of good ideas, and it was amazing how much consensus was built from such a diverse group. And the recommendations that they're going to be discussing are online, they're here as well, and I think they have, David has some more to go. And they're going to speak about them, and I hope you all take them, really look at them closely, and the legislature and the governor looks at them closely, because I think it's, I think they're spot-on, so.
Thank you. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
So, I must say, Mike, with all the respect I've had for you, if I knew your last day being a teenager was at Woodstock and that you were so versed in the Who, I, you know, my respect would have...
I'm sorry.
But, in a serious vein, Mike, this is probably the last time I'll be at this table with you as superintendent, so just let me thank you for your leadership. So, just let me thank you for your leadership, for your commitment to the children of Michigan, and for, in the various positions you've held in education that we've worked with you on, for all you have done for the children of Michigan. We, it's greatly, greatly appreciated, the work you've done.
Thank you, David.
Superintendent Flanagan, Chairman Austin, members of the board, I'm David Hecker, President of the American Federation of Teachers Michigan, and one of the co-chairs of the Coalition for the Future of Detroit Schoolchildren. To my left, I think you all know, is Tanya Allen, the head of the Skilman Foundation, another of, one of the five co-chairs of the Coalition. And I think you know the gentleman to my right, Hester Wheeler, I think best known for being the 12-year executive director of the Detroit branch of the NAACP, but also serving as a top aide to County Executive, who now is the Innovation, Chief Innovation Officer for Black Family Development. And due to the generosity of Black Family Development, Hester has joined us for the implementation phase of this. Implementation, by that I mean moving these recommendations forward so they, they can become policy. And sitting in the chairs behind us are some people who join, Michelle, in, in working on a number of the various subcommittees. All in all, there was a 36-member steering committee, about 140, 150 people like Michelle who worked on subcommittees. And many of these subcommittees had meetings throughout the community to hear from community members, teachers, students, et cetera. This group came together because of a couple of facts. One fact is that in the city of Detroit, 14 different entities can open and close schools, and there is no coordination whatsoever among them. Secondly, as, while there are many great things going on in various schools throughout Detroit, overall, I think we would all say academic performance is not what we all want it to be, it's not what our students deserve. And we also know this isn't unique to Detroit, that there are many school districts, too many school districts, that are either having difficulty with academic performance and/or financially. So, while these are, it's a coalition that came together out of the Detroit community to put together these recommendations, we really see most of these recommendations as if implemented, lifting up all school districts in the state. That is, that is indeed, without a doubt, our hope. Again, Detroit does not stand alone with the issues it faces, it faces educationally. As Michelle said so well, we were, we are, excuse me, we are, a very, a very diverse group in every way you could think of, including politically. And, and it was a, it was a great process to see people, perhaps from my political landscape, moving in a certain direction from hearing certain facts, and people who are perhaps from a different political mindset, seeing certain facts and, and moving along based on those facts, to what Michelle described as really a total consensus report, which we think has some real outstanding and bold recommendations. But process-wise, I think was something that doesn't happen enough in our society, in our culture, in our country. People coming together for the good of the cause, the children in Detroit, in this case, basing decisions on facts and coming to, coming to a consensus. So, you know, we worked over, over three months. People put in an incredible amount of time, a real tribute to, to our community. And we came up with these, with, with these set of, of recommendations. Do you want to go through some of them, Tanya, or how would you like to proceed?
Sure, happy to. So, we have a set of recommendations that could really be described in four categories. One is around strengthening the infrastructure of public education in general. So, many of the things that we see that's happening in Detroit are, is kind of the canary of the mine of what's happening at the state level, which you guys are pretty familiar with. But I think that most people in Detroit, when they started to look under that microscope, were shocked at how, how, how aligned many of the state policies were in creating the conditions. And then you can actually really see the projection of how those conditions would be created in Detroit. So, some of the main things that we're talking about and things I'm sure you guys will be supportive of is looking at that, making sure that we advance the adequacy study, really trying to look at how school districts are funded, thinking about the three, thinking about instead of a one-year funding, especially for shrinking districts, to look at maybe three-year funding cycles, so that we can responsibly shrink districts, that, since we know that the majority of districts in our state are shrinking, that we would like for the state to take responsibility for the DPS legacy that, as a result of its imprint on the district for the last 15 years or so. And it's not about blame in any way from our perspective on this, but if you left it with the school board and they did it, then it would be completely our responsibility, even though it might have been broader contextual and policy issues that created this, the condition where the district went from 200,000 to about 45. But since it wasn't in the school board's hand, it was in the state's. And so, as you kind of take responsibility, if you assume responsibility and you have to take responsibility for the outcomes regardless of your intentions. So, we are advocating for that, as well as operation on a forensic audit of the district, because we know that significant transitions need to happen there. We're also advocating for a set of governance fixes, too, that we think are important in the city. One is that we are, we believe that DPS needs to leave and exit emergency management and that it's returned to an elected board. We know that it'll be a process to get them there and prepare them, and we want to make sure that they're successful. We also are asking that the state support, fund, and empower, and I know this is a challenge on SSRO, because we were not in support of that being moved, but we wanted that, we want the SSRO and SSRD fully funded and empowered. We see the EAA as a workaround to current public policy, and that just doesn't make sense to us. So, we've recommended that the inter-local agreement be canceled. We also talked about how do you, now that you have all of this infrastructure, how do you get the infrastructure there, not the EAA, to this SSRO, so that the SSRO is fully equipped with all of this investment? We don't want to throw the investment out the door. Advocating for stronger governance and transparency around charter schools and their boards, that they have more independence between the EMOs, and also that the authorizers have more accountability in their performance, especially since, you know, the National Association of Charter School Authorizers gave them three out of a possible 40 points in terms of quality measures that the state has. And then the biggest, one of the biggest recommendations we've advanced is the Detroit Education Commission, which it would be a local entity or body that would look over the 14 different entities that are opening and closing schools in Detroit, and bring a little bit of coherence and logic to what's happening in our education landscape. So, just for context, Detroit had 200,000 students. A total, the city had actually about 230,000 students 20 years ago. 200 of those were in Detroit public schools. Maybe about 15 to 20 was in DPS, and then others went to private schools and some schools outside of the city. Today, Detroit has 120,000 students, and they go to 70 different districts. And one district has, Detroit has 45,000. And then there's a little bit, maybe 47 that are in charters that are across the city and in the suburbs, and then there are 11 different districts outside of the city. So, there's no coherence. We don't know where our children are. I actually did this, we do a study, we've done a couple of studies at the Skilman Foundation of when schools have closed, just tracking kids and where they're going, how they're making choices. We've done that with three different schools in the city, and each time, we cannot find 20 percent of the kids. So, they have, you know, obviously, they have a state tracking record, sometimes it may be records, it may be, but we can't have a coherent vision strategy to improve schools in Detroit without responsibility and without a system to manage them. So, those are many of the things that we're talking about, as well as some basic common services, and I'll be quiet so you guys can dig into questions, student, student data enrollment system, which I just gave you the logic behind, transportation, so that we can have, people have equitable choice. A crummy choice is not a choice at all, in my book. And right now, Detroit has a ton of crummy choices. And then the last is to focus on how to streamline special education. And there was one other thing, transportation.
And the regional councils?
And the regional councils. Part of the other thing that we know around this in general, especially around governance, is, you know, Detroit has to wear the scarlet letter. We wear a scarlet letter of having the worst schools in the state, Michigan, in the way that it's articulated, yet we have no governance over them. And so, at the school board, under emergency management, the EAA, which is a semi kind of state entity, or whatever you want to describe it, or even with the authorizers, which are as far as 400 miles away. And out of that process, Detroiters are disengaged. We have, in order to improve education, it's sheer responsibility for everybody, including Detroiters. And one of the things we're advocating for is that we have increased our agency, and one of the things that we want to do that through is by having these local and regional councils, which are made up of representative of schools, who can look at and make decisions about, in alignment with the Detroit Education Commission, that can look at how we open and close schools, what's the supply and demand, because there's a huge mismatch in general related to it.
So, if I could just, two quick comments on the EAA front. We call for the 15 schools to go back to DPS. And just sort of an anecdote, just to underscore the transportation issue that Tanya went through. There's a great parent organization, a parent and community organization in Detroit called 4A2 Forward. And one thing they've done, and Tanya's done this, I've done this, is so, so we can really experience, you know, you can read about something, someone could tell you something, and it has an impact, but just so much of an impact. So, one day, about a month and a half ago, John Reculte, who was one of our other co-chairs, and I met up with the family, the Robinson family, in their apartment in Detroit, and went with Ms. Robinson and her, her two kids. Each went to different charter schools around eight blocks apart to school, to see what they have to do every day to get to school. And so, we had to walk to the first bus, city bus, take the bus to a second bus, wait at McGraw and Junction in the city for the second bus, then take the second bus down, then walk to the young man's school, then double back to the, to the young girl's school. And that trip to school took an hour and a half. John Reculte went on his GPS, 10 minutes. And don't forget, the mom has to come back, and in this case, the kids got a ride home, but in most cases, they don't, so they would have to, they would have to come back. I mean, the kids are doing extremely well in school, but I, you know, John and I told them, there's such respect for them, I can't, can't imagine my kids spending, to be honest, an hour and a half each way to school. I know if you live up north and your school district is multi-county, sometimes that happens. We're here, we're talking about a 10-minute drive in the city of Detroit.
Or five miles.
Right. And because of the, the lack of transportation, you know, there's choice, but, you know, crummy choice isn't choice, but choice that you can't get to also isn't choice. So, you know, stories like that, or, you know, it's not, it's not a story, the facts like that really bring home the need for that one recommendation of transportation, but there are stories behind and facts behind all the recommendations here. Hester?
I'll just add one quick perspective. As a lifelong Detroitter and longtime advocate for the city of Detroit, and one who has been communicating the recommendations in this report over the last seven or eight or 10 days, I didn't expect something this good.
That's how much Hester thinks, Tanya and I and everybody else.
No, no, I mean, 30-plus people, black folk, white folk, suburban folk, and urban folk, and rural folk, and Democrats, Republicans, folk who don't traditionally try and work together, all sat still for some extended hours. I mean, they worked late into the evening, late into the night, weekends, and came up with a set of very, very bold recommendations. This will get us much further than we've ever been. The last 20 years has been a lot of chaos. Most Detroiters have had no reason to pay attention to what happens in the Detroit public schools, because they've had nothing to say about it. So, Michelle and so many others, we appreciate all of you and all of your input. This is good stuff. We need you, I, I expect that many of you have read it already, but you might want to read it and reread it, because it's really, really good. This can get us, I mean, Michigan doesn't have to rank at the bottom. And I love page four in particular, because it says really the way that I'd love to think, one state, one city, one standard, excellence. Thank you.
You know, Tanya, David, Hester, I've had the privilege of knowing you guys for years, and you're just iconic leaders, and this is really a tremendous effort. And it's actually our honor to have you here today, and I think John's going to start out with some comments, and then Cassandra.
Likewise, I want to really applaud the work of the commission, the leaders of it, but also I see behind you others who have taken this and the folks to collectively put this together. I mean, it is impressive, and I think it does provide a set of both specific ideas and some sort of a strategy for how to bring some kind of sanity and some sensible strategy to improve learning and quality education for Detroit in what is, to be generous, a chaotic landscape of public education. And that's no mean feat. I mean, my own hope was that the governor, the legislature, we, in whatever way we could, should embrace your recommendations and figure out how we can help enable them and animate them, in part, not just because they're good ideas and it is a strategy for how to improve learning, but it's coming from the community, it's not coming imposed from outside. Which has been one of the dynamics that's been so unfortunate. My question is, talk to us more about how the governance would work, this commission, what it does. The charter authorizers would still authorize charter schools? Who appoints the commission? What powers does it have as it tries to create some sort of sanity in this opening-closing chaos of many people authorizing schools? How do you see that working? That'd be one piece that even others had, makes some sense, so I want to understand how it would work.
Right. So, it would be a commission that basically has governance over, governance isn't the right word, it has oversight over the quality of schools in general. So, it would set one standard, all schools have to abide by that standard. It'd be a way for this commission to right-size the education landscape, because there's such a mismatch in Detroit in general about schools. So, it does three things, and there are a lot more small subtle things that we do, but we're trying not to usurp any power of local boards, except for a few things. So, not trying to usurp power of a charter board or a DPS board, but what we're saying is, we think it needs to open, close, and any schools, based on performance, so really setting a standard. And so, it becomes like a gatekeeper to the authorizers and also to the district, so that schools are, areas aren't overpopulated, et cetera. The second thing that it does is it provides school planning in general and siting of facilities, what we need, understanding that right now, there's a projection that DPS, not DPS, but our population in the city of Detroit is going to continue to decrease. I think it's what, by 2020?
600.
2020, yeah. That we should, they are projecting that DPS, Detroit may be at 600, and they're saying that DPS may be at 25,000 students. So, it means that we have to do a ton of pruning. And I'm not saying cutting, I'm using the word pruning intentionally, because there might be some consolidations, there may be some closures, but there are some places where there are deserts and there are no good schools on it. That, so that's all kind of one. The second is that we have to have a centralized place of being able to look at some data for the city of Detroit because of these 60-plus districts, so we can figure out what's the trend lines, what's going on with our kids in general. We can't do it, just, you know, finding the graduation rate for the city of Detroit, you're going to be hard-pressed, because you got to figure out 60 different districts and then do the compilation of the number. Now, and we always rely on what DPS is doing, and they only have less than half the market share. And then the third thing is to orchestrate or help lead, and maybe in some cases, do a set of shared services. Transportation, enrollment, data, you know, those kinds of things. We are recommending that the mayor make the appointments to the commission, and we know that at the state level, that there are other people who want to make recommendations there, but we're, you know, staying steadfast and saying that this needs to be, at some point, Detroiters have to be responsible for the education of our children, and we're willing to take that responsibility.
Excellent. Cassandra, please.
Well, I too want to commend you for the work that you did and the report. I think it has a lot of excellent ideas in it, and I truly hope the governor and the legislature pay very close attention and do, rather than cherry-pick, actually take the report as a whole and look at it. I had one question, and... Um, I had one question, and when I read the report and listening to you, it sounds very clear what your recommendation towards the education achievement authority is, and that is that those schools go back to DPS. But then, a week after you came out with your report, there was an editorial in one of the Detroit papers that quoted, or they, they seemed to quote you, saying, oh, no, 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 the EAA is going to exist, it, nothing's changing, um, where is that, that miscommunication or that, that coming from?
Yeah, no, I'm happy to answer that one, because I was trying to figure it out, too. I was like, when did I say that? Or whatever. Uh, so, because I'm like, I didn't say that, and then I actually figured it out. Um, so I did a, um, blog that was responding to the critics, and in the blog, I'd say, we need to fund SSRO, SSRD, we need to populate it, the EAA is a workaround, it needs to go away, the EAA infrastructure could be migrated up to the state level. Well, my communications person edited it, and she didn't think that the word "infrastructure" was important to the EAA's infrastructure. So they grabbed that out of that and then laid out that editorial. So I wasn't a party to that editorial, I didn't know that it was coming, you know, I didn't know what they were putting in there, and so it makes it seem like I was complicit in making this statement with them when I wasn't.
Okay, thank you for clearing that up.
I see our media guys got that down. All right, you got that? Other comments from Kathleen?
Well, I too commend you. I, I must say, I agree with Hester, it's much better than I anticipated.
Once again, we're held in high regard. Thank you, Kathleen.
No, I was, I was very dubious about it, and you know that.
Right.
But you have made some very good recommendations, I think, and you, the fact that, that it is such a diverse group and that they came together is quite remarkable. Um, having John Reculte and David Hacker agree on these things is really terrific.
There were some passionate discussions.
Right.
But, you know, I was going to say, don't, for me, the, and I've said this to Tanya many times, for me, now let's use this as an example, this coalition, i- if I believe that someone's bottom line is what I believe should be the bottom line, so in this project, what's best for the kids in Detroit, then I could work through the obvious differences, different approaches to things that John Reculte and I have. We could work, we could work through that, because I have 100% respect that while we're, we look at things somewhat differently, that his bottom line are the kids in Detroit.
Well, I, I think Tanya described it very well, there are so many different authorizers in Detroit, and they don't coordinate with each other at all, and there's no, there's no rhyme or reason. You'd think they would do research before they went into an area, but they can have three schools from different authorizers in the same little area, and then another area doesn't have any. So it's really, uh, very chaotic, and it doesn't serve the, the city well, it doesn't serve the students well, it doesn't serve the community well, so that, that has to be recognized, but these problems were created by the state, by the state policies of authorizing charter schools, by school choice as much as they did, and, uh, plus the fact that the state had taken over the schools in Detroit, and we now are in our fourth emergency manager, and that's after the, there was a previous takeover with the, the different appointed board, and that was the same idea, though. So it's, Detroit really, the, the people of Detroit have not really run their own schools in many years, so the problems were created by the state in effect. And Steve Henderson had a very good editorial, I thought, at Sunday's Free Press, and he said, "If you break it, you fix it." And according to him, the state broke it, and we should be fixing it. So I, I agree with that, and I, I think that that's, that's very important. Uh, I was skeptical about the commission in the beginning, because I thought that you're giving the Detroit Public School Board, elected board, back to the people of Detroit, and have that, have them be represented by their board, and then you have a commission over it, but the, you do need the commission somehow, rather, to create some order out of the chaos of, of creating new schools and where they go, and all that kind of thing, so.
And I, I wouldn't, yeah, I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry, I was going to say, it's really very much like a baseball commissioner. Like, you know, we're, the baseball commissioner then tell the team, how you, who you pick for your talent, what you do, how you go, you know, what number of runs you're going to hit, all, any of that strategy, but they do say, you can exist in this city or not. Like, you're existing, if you do these things, you make it bad for everybody else. It's just that very slim kind of environmental support. I'm sorry, David.
That's okay, I was going to say, Tanya learned over all these months that if she wants me to understand, it better be baseball. But, but, but I, I, I was just going to say, it, you know, DEC really isn't over the Detroit School Board. It really isn't over any of the charter school boards. There, there is one piece, open and closing, that yes, a traditional school board would have that power, that Detroit School Board will not, but, uh, so it's, it's that piece that goes to, uh, DEC, but the DEC isn't over the Detroit School Board for all the work that it will be doing.
Yeah, but I think it is important to have it.
Yeah, no, absolutely.
I've now come to support the idea. But I also have the question that Cassandra raised, I, I have concerns about the op-ed that, uh, that Joyce Giles and then Steve Ham wrote, because they, they don't imply, they state that, that, that the, that the EAA will become the form office, that that's why the governor has already transferred it, so that this was all, sounded like what they wrote, that this was all in the planning. And I don't know if, if they know something you don't know, or if you just have conflicting ideas of what's going to happen? And when, when, can you say the schools go back to the EA, to the Detroit Public Schools, when? The question is, when? And how long does the EAA stay there?
That's right, there's no date in the report. Um, to be honest, it's probably a difference of opinion among the coalition as to members, as to when that should happen. Uh, the, uh, you know, when you do coalition work, you, you compromise on things, and some things you just don't address, right? Uh, because there's a lot bigger thing like this, this report to get to. But I, but I'll tell you something that I think everybody, uh, on the coalition supports is even those who think they should go back right away, or those who think it should be longer, that it, it has to be returned in a way that is obviously not disruptive to the children.
Right.
Right? So, so if it, if it goes back, and all that's really done is that EAA comes off the school and DPS goes up, and the kids are attending the same, the same schools, and, uh, then, you know, that's not disruptive. If, uh, if other things need to happen, you know, I'm one who would rather have it happen sooner rather than later, but my bottom line is, it has to happen in a way that's not disruptive to the kids' education.
Right, and I would say, I mean, I think part of it is self-preservation, right? I mean, we came out with recommendations that we said that the EAA, um, that agreement that creates it should be dissolved, and they are coming out in ways, trying to position themselves to, to be relevant and to have a role in the future. Um, and so I, and I, so I actually, I think the thing that was interesting about it is I glanced at the editorial, and I never really read it, read it, because I just assumed, like, everybody has the right to try and do self-preservation. I don't, I don't, personally, I don't know what, I don't think they have a clarity about what they want to do, what they want to be, I don't think, I have not heard any clear plan about even SSRO, SSRD. I mean, I hear a ton of criticism from each of the entities and a ton of speculation, but nobody, there has not been any coherence about how that's described in any way. I think we are clear about what we think needs to happen. Does the state need to have a strategy to help low-performing schools? Absolutely. Does that strategy need to support Detroit because we have a high number of support? Yes. Do we need a separate entity, EAA, when we have a state law and a state district that is able to do that? No. Should the schools, um, and should that entity or strategy, whatever it may be, should it start with a heavy hand of taking schools that leaves districts financially disadvantaged? Absolutely not. You should start it with a lighter touch, and you escalate it as it's needed. Um, and so those were the things that we absolutely agreed on, and, and making sure that those schools get transitioned back to the DPS, and that they are revisited and reviewed by SSRO and SSRD to decide what should happen to them, but they should go back to the district. Um, and I think what, that to me, what's important even about this, when you think about the SSRD, is EAA should be a cautionary tale to us about any place. All right, so I looked at the top to bottom list, and you know, you could, Litchfield, is that the right name of the city? Um, the, the place, and I don't even know if it's a city, the town in Michigan, it has two schools, uh, in its entire district, they're both on, um, the, uh, priority listing or whatever the right name is. If, if a SSRO or SRD decided to take one school out of that and put it in the district, you destroy that whole system. I, that, you know, or if you go into a, um, city where there are 12 schools and you take two, or one, that may be financially equivalent to the 15 that came out of DPS, and so we have to really look at this, um, and construct public policy that is going to be supportive of how we help districts improve, especially when so many of them are shrinking, you cannot separate school performance from district performance. That's my aha in all of this, so.
Excellent points. Lupe, please.
I just want to say something from the west side of the state, from Grand Rapids in particular, uh, to Detroit. I, as an educator, as a citizen, as a state board member, I am very proud of this document that you came up with. For two years, I, I've been sitting on this board, and many different people from Detroit and on, members from the, of the board have indicated their concerns about what's happening in education in Detroit. And you took the, the concern, and you have developed some recommendations and, and strategies or, and put it in this booklet, it's very easy to read. I, I'm very fortunate that I work with the Michigan Department of Education, and they had already sent us a summary, so I was able to read that, and when I read that, goosebumps went over my body, because I have been hearing so many testimonies of people that are concerned about what's happening in Detroit. I don't live in Detroit, but I live in the state of Michigan, and I, I, Detroit is a very important city to our state, so it's very important that the educational piece, the education of our students gets gripped by the citizens, you, and, and have developed this document. So I, I, any way that I, from the west side, can be of assistance to you, a- as you progress with your, your process here, I'd be more than happy to, to help. I know that some schools and some personalities from Detroit have been going to Grand Rapids' public schools to see what they're doing over there with our transformation plan, to see if there, it can be incorporated in what you're doing. Uh, so that, of course, I taught for, with them, and was a principal in many different things for many, many years, and so my, you know, loyalty is to Grand Rapids, and the superintendent is doing a very, very good job as, as she moves forward, because as you said, this problem is not just Detroit. We, we had, we have some of it in Grand Rapids, but it takes some brave people to move the agenda forward, and you're doing it for Detroit. So from whatever you do, we're going to learn from that. From whatever we're doing in, in Grand Rapids, you're learning from that. So that's how it works. We cannot work in silos in the educational field, we have to work together. That's what we told the legislators, they cannot just be doing whatever they want to over there, and you over there, and us over here, we have to work together to make this work. So I commend you, and I commend you, and I commend you, this document is fabulous.
Thank you, thank you.
John, and I, Eileen, Eileen and John?
Uh, so Lupe just made my speech. I'd love to make it again, but she's a lot better at it than I am. Um, but she did say a couple of things that are important for us to say, too, which is that her loyalty is to Grand Rapids, I know Lupe well enough to know that her loyalty is to every child in the state of Michigan. And in presenting this to us and, and bringing a life to the faces who put it together, all of you who came, thank you so much. We can't understand the ramifications for the children all over the state, but we hear, we, we understand that every problem that's, that's addressed in this study and, and by the commission is something that other children are facing. So in our responsibility to the whole state, um, we can embrace your work and embrace this document, and we wish you Godspeed with the next steps, um, because they're important for every child. We can't comment on the specifics, and, uh, we don't know how it will work out politically or economically, because those are unfortunately not our purview. Uh, but thank you, uh, from the bottom of our hearts, because, um, for every problem that you brought up, there are 30 communities that I know personally, and so many more that are, are turning around with boards who don't know what to do, uh, and haven't been able to figure out a strategy for it, so, thank you.
Thank you.
John?
Um, I'm glad you all came up here, thanks for coming and getting here on short notice for everybody, it's really important. To Tanya, to your point, we were just looking at, you know, what Massachusetts does with their turnaround strategy. They start with the state, working with the district that hosts the schools, to say, how can we help you re-engineer your systems to better support learning and effectiveness in that school? They don't take it out right away.
Exactly.
Which is a good, you know, a, a good point for us to reiterate, there's a good way to do this, and it starts with first, working together with the districts so that they re-engineer, uh, and support the school's success as the job one. Um, I, Dan Varner, I see, isn't with you, our former colleague, you guys keep him out of this so he didn't mess it up. I trust he's doing well in the line.
Dan was a great member of the committee, uh, he co-chaired, uh, the governance committee, one of the, the bigger issues to grapple with, so it was great to have, uh, Dan on, working so hard on this.
Great, great work, thanks.
Thank you. Shalina and Richard?
Yeah, um, it, it really was a privilege to, um, and to be a part of it, and I understand from, I'll continue to be a part of it, the policy committee, and I have to tell you, I've taken some heat from some people in the community, and I, um, and I think you've probably heard the same criticisms, so, um, some of the concerns, and I think some of the concerns are legitimate, and, and one is with the, um, the DEC and how it's going to operate, and there's a concern that it will favor charter schools over traditional public, it will, um, become dominated by people of a certain interest to the detriment of traditional public schools. And so, um, so I wanted to give you an opportunity to respond to that, and, um, on that issue. There are other concerns with regard to, um, I think that's probably the main one, uh, that I've been hearing a lot about, well, the, the, you know, the state reform office, the officer and how that's going to operate, and, um, to make sure that it's not just a way to codify the EAA, which is, um, and to sort of get around, um, the legislation that couldn't be passed. So, you know, those are the two issues, and I just wanted to give it up to you to respond.
If I could answer the first one, I think, you know what's striking to me, um, is that all of the public school, traditional public school people say they think that the DEC is going to favor charters and put traditional schools out, and all of the charter people say, we think that it's going to charter, it's going to favor traditional schools and try and put the charters out. Um, and, and I actually think that's a great place to be. Because that's exactly what we want, is that it's not going to favor either one of them, it's going to favor merit. If you perform, you can do well, but there's nobody, there's not anybody collectively in Detroit, the traditional system or the charter system, that could stand on any platform that talks about merit, because all of them are crummy. Uh, and so, I, you know, so I, that's like the one thing, that I, I can talk about all kinds of things that are political, but it's the one that just pisses me off every time I hear it, because it's like, these schools are so focused on ideology and not focused on success for children, and that's what this commission is trying to put a platform for. And we, and part of the reason that we actually talked about having it appointed by the mayor, um, uh, from our perspective, was that we didn't want it to be subject to political, and we wanted to protect it as best as we can from political capture, um, around elections. And so I use this, and I say it lovingly to David, is, you know, so all of the conservatives say the unions are going to, they would take over the elections, and, uh, and the traditional school people don't say this, but they ought to, you ought to be worried about the charter lobbyists who could take over that. So what we're trying to do is protect it as best as we can, um, and trying to put in as many caveats that actually would, one, not allow it to ever take more power than it possibly could, um, so being very clear about what its powers are, what its lanes are. Um, and then I think the second thing is, um, uh, being really clear about setting up the And then I think the second thing is being really clear about setting up the structure of those appointments so that the appointments, so you can never have that swinging in one way or another where you would have favor. I mean, it has to be, it has to be agnostic around school governance and a zealot around achievement.
Let me just reference what a number of people have said during this discussion. When this whole process started three, four months ago, a lot of people said there'll never be agreement, given who's at the table, because they're real traditional school advocates, they're real charter school advocates, or whatever the differences are, and we came to an agreement.
Richard, you're next, sir.
I, I raised my four kids in Detroit, the, near the corner of Evergreen and Sixth Mile, and I deeply appreciated the opportunity to choose. And in the course of my four kids, they attended Detroit Public Schools, they attended parochial schools, they attended charter schools. So the ability to choose and the ability for parents to choose, I think is, is a paramount value. And the, the authority of a commission to determine and coordinate different schools is, seems to be at variance with, with the choice that's desirable for so many of us who live in Detroit. Having said that, I appreciate the work that's gone into this, and there are many, there are many proposals that I think have merit. The real issue with Detroit Public Schools is demographics. I wrote my doctorate on the closing of parochial schools in the 1990s, and that essentially deter, that essentially was determined by demographics. And the same trends that I identified there is affecting parochial schools, affected Detroit Public Schools, and we continue to see the loss of population. And the real, the real, that's what's behind Detroit's continuing emergency manager, because they can never, they can never balance the books because people keep leaving, and so you have to shrink to, to accommodate the, the smaller pool. So I think the, the problem is, people leave the city and leave their debt behind. Irresponsible boards, overspent, putting that debt on the, on the, on the shoulders of a future generation, and then when that generation left, there was no left to pay the debt. So I think the state's assuming the debt for DPS, it makes sense. In terms of consolidating the EAA schools with Detroit Public Schools, I'm, I'm kind of agnostic on that. I'm, I'm not sure what the best route is. The EA was formed because of another reform measure, the Reform District, which is adopted during the Granholm years. It seemed to be an intent to say we're serious about school performance. Whether that has turned out to be the best policy approach, I, I think is up, is up for debate. So I think, I, I think that most of these recommendations are well worth considering. Some, I think, may be debatable, but I deeply appreciate the work on this and thank you for sharing with us today.
Thank you, thank you, Richard. And on the issue of choice, so, you know, there will still be a great deal of choice, as there is now in Detroit. And, but, but we do need, we, Coalition obviously thinks, and it's, it's a good debate, good discussion, we, we do need some coherence to the system. So if there's a good viable DPS school in a neighborhood and then a charter school opens up right next door when we don't need extra seats, right? And some kids leave the DPS school, you know, that may be another choice for those parents, but it also impacts every other child in DPS schools. So, so I think there is choice, yes. Choice is, is part of our educational landscape now, but, but, but I also think there is, there is some line where you need to look at, that if there is just unbridled choice, you know, what's the possible impact on that, on other kids that aren't involved with the family making that choice? Because it, you know, it impacts everybody else. If a child, when a child, if you open up a DPS school next to two real strong charter schools and kids leave the charter schools to the DPS school, you know, it impacts every other kid in those charter schools. So there's still gonna be plenty of choice under this model, just trying to bring some more coherence to it.
Right. This is not an anti-choice model in any form or fashion. It's actually recognizing that we do have choice, and now that you've hit a tipping point that more than 50%, then individual schools can no longer act like they are individual schools. When you're more than 50% of the delivery system, then you actually have to act like a delivery system. You can no longer act like an individual school. And that's an issue that is in Detroit, but it is an issue that we're gonna have to deal, and I would hope that you guys will be wrestling with that at the state level for our schools.
Richard to finish, then Pam then Mike.
Yeah, and I guess that's.
We're not gonna get done.
And that's, and just so I can note the different conceptions we're approaching with. The conception of the study assumes that the education market is a single market and serving a single market interest, and the perception, the, when you attack it as choice, you assume that there are market segments. And so just as DPS put their Flix program right next to their Renaissance program, and there was no conflict, it's not like Flix dropped, took from Renaissance.
Well, it's an elementary and a high school.
Exactly.
And Renaissance is an application.
But, but hold on one second, but the three charters that are going.
Charters are application schools.
But the three charter that are within that one mile radius is a challenge, because, not because it's a challenge to Flix or to Renaissance, because they are destabilizing each other. So you, so the state is paying for three buildings within a, a one mile radius of each other, and they, some of them are low performing, some of them are, they're, none of them are proven. Let's just say that. So you now have families that are gonna go to those schools, all three of those schools will be destabilized. All of them are gonna provide you a mediocre academic quality because they won't all be fully enrolled. So at some point, you gotta figure it out. So you're not only trying to destabilize Flix, which isn't actually at risk of being destabilized because it's a school of choice, what you now have is choices that you put on the table and they are destabilized. There is no predictability there, and you have to create predictability. If you don't have that predictability in the marketplace, then what you have is an erosion of every school in the city of Detroit, and that's what we're seeing. And maybe it is an erosion of, of population, but if it's an erosion of population, then tell me why, in the last eight years, we've had such dramatic declines. It's because schools are not focusing on academics, they're focusing on enrollment, they're focusing on putting more funds in their operations and the like. And so I think, I get passionate about this because it's not about a choice issue, it's about how do we ensure good choices for all kids and making sure that these schools can be stabilized. Everybody's failing from this. The kids, the teachers.
Good passionate debate. Pam and then Mike.
Michelle, if you were gonna say something related to what, okay. Okay. I just wanted to echo what the rest of the board said and really commend you on sticking through with this. I know that it must have been a tremendous task, to say the least, with all the different dynamics coming together. Folks such as myself, a few miles or a few stops up the 75 corridor, really looking at this because, you know, and, and not really clear on what was gonna come out of this, and then hearing you all talk about how this can be good for the state as a whole, being a bit apprehensive. But I really thank you for your clarity that you've brought to the table today and just ask that, you know, finding ways to really kind of like articulate that broadly as far as some of the clarification on the EAA discussions, as well, well as the, you know, the local control as it relates to the, to the school board, the elected school board. So I just commend you all. Thank you for coming.
And I'm gonna give you a real example of why your comments about the structural reform, the timeliness is great, you know, and I thought it was good that the governor said he'd wait till a Coalition report before he does some of his work, and I am hopeful that he'll accept many of the, but here's a real world example. And under the state law, the current law, with the Reform Office being here, calls for the state superintendent to use authority to label schools in effect. So we've done that. We've named schools priorities, schools over the years. I made a decision within that same authority that this year we wouldn't label any schools because of the testing mismatch. But also, so here's, here's a real dilemma until we get the system. Once the EO was announced to move, I thought, okay, I'm not gonna publicly get into that so much as to say, I'm gonna use my authority before the EO happens, and I've already decided that 28 schools would be released from priority status. And the reason is that they've made progress and want to, if I was the one under that law that named them, then I can be the one that unnames them before that's taken away. Having said that, the disconnect is, and I don't even know this off the top of my head, but what if one of those schools is an EAA school? What does that mean? So we've released them from priority status, they're in an EAA situation, but we actually don't have any control over the EAA because they were designated by a Detroit Emergency Manager. So there's probably each of those individual, I've been in a lot of these rooms over the 10 years, and I would say, as far as I can see, everyone who's ever been involved in this is trying to do the right thing, it's in the spirit of what you're saying. But the combination of all these separate meetings over many years has created this mismatch. So when we have our deficit hearings that we're summoned to speak at every quarter, the single biggest problem, we have all these deficits, is enrollment instability, not just Detroit, all over the place. So I mean, I think that might be a point, if you, if I'm reading the tea leaves, I have no inside information on this, but reading some comments the governor made, there may be some commonality there on how to try to stabilize that so that this isn't just the Wild West and the way you described. So I mean, I think you're like at a historical moment and, and hopefully can continue to ride this together with the governor, because ultimately, obviously, he's got a big, you know, a big say in this, and as the rest of the board has. I mean, it's just outstanding work and really gonna contribute very much to this. So Michelle, thanks for getting us on our agenda today, and thank you for all of you for taking the time to come up here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Nice to see you. Good to see everybody.
And I think we did have, we wanna honor, because we were out of sync a little bit, but there is one more of public participation.
Thank you. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
How are you?
I know.
I know.
Thank you so much. Congratulations.
Ever live?
I guess I'm pretty.
Just know your name. I appreciate you. Thank you very much. All right.
Pamela, look at her.
Ow, chump.
I have.
Scorpion.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Fantastic.
That's great.
What'd you teach?
Okay.
Congratulations.
I've actually run up about this.
This is just a, like a draft. This is not gonna be a document. This is gonna be tweaked and tricked and changed before it's adopted.
Nice to meet you. What did you teach?
Fantastic.
That's great.
What'd you teach? Okay, great. Okay. Congratulations.
I've actually run up about this.
This is just a, it's a good, it's a beginning.
Yeah.
Good to see you.
Good to see you.
With the governor and see, you know, together.
I was thinking that too.
Kids and not.
Nice to see you.
Nice to see you.
Very good.
How are you?
Very good.
Thank you.
Oh, that's great. Oh, that'd be fantastic. Great, great. Okay, we have, you know, we have, as every day goes by, a stronger and stronger.
Sorry about that.
Oh, okay.
Thank you.
As every day goes by, we have a stronger relationship with the EAA.
Yeah. You, you're right minded.
We're becoming closer and closer. Yeah. Congratulations. Great to meet you. Sure. Thank you.
I'm from Water.
Thank you.
Thank you.
With no notice.
Yep.
Yeah.
This afternoon.
Oh, yeah.
We're not gonna have a lot of debate.
I mean, I'm not gonna say a word.
Karen's not here, I will be.
I was going to, and then I decided, you know what? No explanation needed.
Yeah, yeah.
Is there an extra copy to record?
I have, I have.
Is there any extra copies?
Yeah, it's sitting right over there.
That's extra.
Is that an extra copy first?
Yes.
It could be. I was keeping it in case someone asked me for one.
Brian, just to let you know, this shows you're really not in charge.
You can do this all you want.
Sounds like it though, it says.
It sounds good.
We're gonna go back to public participation with one addition that came in in the middle of our, our agenda change. So we're gonna honor that.
I believe this is probably Bethany Bratney approaching the table, so if you will sit at the end of the table, that'd be great, and you'll have five minutes, and the board does not engage in conversation, and we'll start whenever you're ready. Okay. Thank you for coming.
Thank you so much for having me. I am Bethany Bratney. I am the School Library and Media Specialist at Novi High School. I am a National Board Certified Teacher. And I'm here today on behalf of the Network of Michigan Educators to share some success. So success in a school library. I know you all understand the value of school libraries. You passed, signed that wonderful statement in October in support of school libraries. So I know you know the stats and studies about school libraries and high achievement and test scores, but even with all of those things in mind, I still hear from a lot of people that, what does that mean in day-to-day? What am I, what am I doing day-to-day that, that helps with those things? What are the successes that I'm having on a day-to-day basis? So I tried to categorize those things for you into sort of four main roles and gave you lots of examples. I will not read them all. I'm gonna try to highlight the three, three bold bullets, and they go with those four pictures. So this year, some of the biggest successes that I've had have been with guest authors. I've coordinated two guest authors coming to my school. On the left picture there is Mark Aronson. He's an award-winning nonfiction author for children and young adults. And the far right is Karen Joy Fowler. She is, she was on the Man Booker Prize shortlist this year for her most recent work of fiction, and we coordinated her visit through a longstanding collaboration with our public library. And both, both authors came and had interaction with our students, they had a firsthand experience, and they had very different messages and programs that they were able to do with our students. Mark Aronson, because he's nonfiction, he talked directly to our students in small groups about how he does real-world research, how he uses text sets to gather the resources that he needs to write his nonfiction, how he goes for this deep reading knowledge, which is straight out of the Common Core. I couldn't have written it better. So that was a really valuable experience. And then Karen Joy Fowler, being fiction, she talked to a lot of our ELA students about the writing process, publishing, what that's like, and the struggles and how she perseveres, and that was incredibly meaningful for them as well. And as a bonus, our Mark Aronson visit, he wrote about the visit to our school in a national journal. So then we ended up with national PR, and each of those kids who was in his groups thought he was writing about them. They were so excited. So it was really incredible. national journal. So then we ended up with national PR, and each of those kids who was in his groups thought he was writing about them. They were so excited. So it was a really incredible experience to have both of them this year. And then the middle picture, the small group of kids and me, that's our English Lab Book Club. So English Lab is a class that the students can elect to take if they feel that they have a skills deficit in their ELA class. It's an extra English class for them. And it tends to be a smaller class. And so this is a program that I have been running in conjunction with that class for five years. It's a book club, but these are not kids who would come to an elective book club after school, probably. So we give them an opportunity to connect and read around a high-interest text, and then give them a chance to meet in a special environment. Of course, there are snacks. And they come and discuss, they relate, they talk about text connections that they're making, text-to-text connections that they're making between multiple books that they've read. They connect to their backgrounds, which is something we're always, you know, trying to get them to do, their background knowledge. And we see these kind of amazing breakthroughs with those kids every time they come down. So that's another, I look forward to that. Every time it's time to have another book club meeting, it's one of my favorite things. And then the only picture I haven't addressed is a read poster there with a young man. So another function of a modern school librarian is still, as it has always been, to promote the library, the programming, and literacy. And so I try to do fun things, and one of the things is I make read posters featuring our staff and students, to show our own staff and students as role models in reading, to build a community network around reading, sort of form those connections. And that young man in particular was very excited. He won a contest, and one of the prizes of the contest was to be featured on a read poster. And he was thrilled, so we put it up. And I found out after the fact that he had been really struggling with his reading, had raised his reading score, his teacher encouraged him to enter the contest. I just drew his name out of a hat, but it all kind of came full circle in a real moment of success for him. So that was really exciting for me as well. So that's just a piece of it. The flyer is a lot of it, but I really appreciate having the opportunity to share with you today about the modern library.
Appreciate it. Thank you for taking the time to be here.
I'm glad you had the opportunity to.
We're back in the committee of the hall, and we're going to move to an item that we've been looking forward to, and that's the introduction of National Board Certified Teachers. I do want to say, and just as a preamble, that I have a number of folks here that were in my class when I taught for 15 years at Wayne State, so it was good to reconnect. And I'm so proud of them to have gotten to this point where they've reached kind of the pinnacle of their profession with that.
Report?
I'm sorry?
Teacher of the Year report?
No, it's later.
Oh, it's after?
It's later.
Thanks.
So, and we've asked, to be corrected by the teacher over here, that, so Melanie actually is going to work us through this. I think she's, this is totally appropriate, given her, her status as Teacher of the Year. So we're going to kick it right over to you, Melanie, please.
I'd love to invite our guests. Thank you.
We moved ours up just because, Sandra, we just moved ours up to accommodate.
I'm thrilled to introduce our guests today. On behalf of the Michigan NBCT Network, represented today by Denise Walker, NBC 2010 President and Cheryl Corpus, Secretary 2011, and the Network of Michigan Educators. I am honored to introduce you to the new National Board Certified Teachers for 2014. These seven teachers have achieved the highest credential available to American educators, national certification through the National Board for Professional Teaching Standards. These teachers successfully completed the certification by submitting four portfolios, which include student work samples, videos, and extensive analysis of their teaching and their students' learning. They also completed six assessment exercises demonstrating their deep content knowledge in their chosen content area. I'll introduce them individually, so please step forward or say hello. We have Jennifer Boring-Kata. Did I say that correctly? Sorry about that. Here on School District, and she's generalist early childhood. We have Therese Michelle Geist, Southfield Public School District, and her field is mathematics and early adolescence. We have Angela Gwinnett-Glaster. She's from Southfield Public School District also, and her field is literacy, reading, language arts, early and middle school. We have Sally Hamama-Nelu, also from Southfield Public School District, and her field is English as New Language, early and middle childhood. I should also mention that Sally was my nephew's teacher. Still one of her favorites.
And we went to Galileo together.
Yes, also, also Galileo. We have Vanessa Ann Parnell, Detroit Public School District, and her field is generalist early childhood. We have Kimberly Catherine Kelly Westner, Novi Community School District, library media, early childhood through young adulthood. And we have Gina Lee Wilson, Early College Alliance at Eastern Michigan University, and her field is mathematics, adolescence, and young adulthood. So I'd just like to say, I am not nationally board certified, and I know how much work goes into that, and I've talked to so many teachers who have gone through the process. So I really commend anybody who's willing to put the time and energy and commitment, and even the financial piece towards, working towards such a wonderful goal. So congratulations to all of you.
Hi, I'm John Austin, President of the Board. Let me give you your nice certificates, and also if you're Sally, there you go, Sally. Therese, we're Therese. Thank you, Therese. Congratulations. Angela, Angela, fantastic.
Thank you.
Jennifer.
Thank you.
Here we go. Vanessa. Thank you, Vanessa.
Thank you.
Kimberly. And Gina. Everybody get one?
Thank you.
Good, let me just say real quick, here, we have, nothing more important to excellent outcomes for kids than great teaching, right? One of the big challenges in education is we don't provide support and pathways for you as teachers to stay teaching and improve your game and become even better. Here you have a program that both gives you professional recognition and improves your skills, and hopefully makes a difference for the learning of kids, you know? And this is so powerful, and I congratulate you for doing it. It's also always, and people have heard me give this talk, it pains me deeply, the Michigan, for a while, the program was run out of Michigan. Jim Kelly, Kathy knows Jim, we were running the program nationally out of Michigan. Since we have never really invested in it and supported it like we should, we have some hundreds of National Board Certified Teachers, of which you are among them. North Carolina, we had a governor, Jim Hunt, over years, who said, you want to improve education? You want to have great teaching? Let's buy into support for National Board Certified Teachers, which they did. They have 18,000 National Board Certified Teachers. I've beat on now three governors that if we're serious about education, we should be doing more to help people like you get this both skill and get this credential. But thank you for doing it on your own. It's powerful, and thank you for your commitment to help improve the lives of kids, so.
Thank you. Appreciate this.
And I continue to show my newfound technology, not totally new, I'm tweeting this right now with your pictures, so. See how that goes.
I have one. I don't do it very often now. I'll be out of passion soon. Snapchat, my kids use Snapchat. Do you think it disappears forever?
What's next? Minute.
Yeah, sorry.
Real problem.
So yes, we're at the minute stage.
Can I make a motion?
Yes.
To approve the minutes of our various special meetings and closed session, I would move, we approve items I, J, K, L, M, and N, minutes of our recent meetings.
Support.
Motion's been made in second. With the chair being empty? Motion's been made, second, any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, the minutes have it.
I just want to thank, thank Marilyn for all these minutes. This was a tremendous job of this last five years. She does everything, but this was an extra added attraction, so.
Well, thank you, Marilyn, for all your work throughout the busy time we've had. And thank the, my fellow board members. It was a lot of work and a lot of time and a lot of energy with, with good results, so. Melanie, we have your time. If she's still down, Teacher of the Year. All right. Go on to the legislative, we'll wait Melanie tonight.
I'm going to make a water run. Run.
Nice, Melanie, thanks for bringing us those, your colleagues.
Marilyn is Billy the Nice. I'll take that one. I'll take mine back.
Are you done?
Yes.
Thanks, everybody, for, thank you for introducing and making sure I got on the agenda. Thank you. Thank you.
We got the whole kit and caboodle leadership coming up here.
Yeah. Well, they were here for the, I think the Black Caucus?
Yeah.
Earlier, which is why they were running. They just didn't know if they had enough time to run over yet.
Marilyn?
Two minutes.
Marilyn?
Yeah. Okay. We can go right to, when Melanie's here.
You want to connect?
Yeah, it's saying trying to connect. Was that not? It's been a lot less money. Other side. It's sort of like the money.
Here.
Well, that would probably help. One of the other factors, like even though.
Oh, now it's saying reconnect.
Did I lose that? It showed why only like 5,000, only 5,000.
No.
Is this supposed to be? They can't keep up right here. Okay. Because I can't hold the teachers. And then, there. Look at this spiral. But then I want to.
Lupe wants to.
Oh, yeah. What's that? This?
Not to suggest that you and Richard have been in intimate conversation.
Wouldn't you behave yourself, Michelle?
But can I say something in here that I want to be like conveyed? Anyone there? No. Sorry.
Okay, thank you for your patience. I was talking with Lupe today about how it was a year ago tomorrow that I interviewed for this role, so I'm thinking a lot about the finalists now and anticipating, you know, who will be selected for next year and just how much their life will change. I look forward to seeing that as this year starts to come to an end for me. Mike already talked about McCall. The McCall Conference is the Michigan Association of Computer User Learners. I think I said that right. But this is one of the biggest conferences in the entire state, and this was actually my first experience attending McCall and presenting at McCall. So during the pre-conference, I got to speak with Michigan Virtual University teachers. So that was a great experience, and I've been learning more and more about their organization. Then I got to just be an attendant for a day or two at McCall as well, and there was a, what's that?
Photo bomb.
What's that?
Photo bomb over there.
Yeah. No, he was actually the one taking the photo, so he just wanted to make that face. But you probably see some familiar faces there. You'll see June Tyson on the left, and Gary Abud at the bottom, who are both former Michigan Teachers of the Year. And then we have some of my colleagues here from my district, and then just some people that I connected with through this conference. So I realized through this year and this process that connecting educators is really going to be what's most powerful in their professional development, and the McCall Conference was a great culminating experience of what I've learned. So it was a great chance to meet with people who I've connected through Twitter and never met in person, and we already felt like we knew each other. So I know you mentioned Twitter earlier, Mike, and I commend you for using it, because I have found it to be the, the single most powerful tool in my professional development this year in connecting with other educators across the state. So I would like to find ways for more teachers to be able to get involved. I know that there was one school district, and I want to say it was Romeo, that sent their entire staff to McCall this year. And what an amazing, powerful experience that must have been for them. It was also a chance for me to reconnect with some other outstanding educators. I've been part of the Michigan Educator Voice Fellowship this year, and there were several of us there, so we got together for dinner. So it was a re-energizing time for us. And, you know, I should mention too about the Ed Voice Fellows, that they've been really, really big proponents of trying to help people understand the Common Core and the new Michigan standards, so that they see them for the valuable things that they are and not the things that, you know, Kathleen spoke about, you know, the misinformation that is out there. Some teachers from MishEd, which is, you know, just kind of a connection of people through Twitter, they put together something called an Idea Slam, and they invited educators, you know, who could buy a ticket for $20 and be part of this fun night, and they had people who submitted ideas that could, you know, promote teacher leadership, and they selected finalists. The finalists got to do a pitch while we were there, a two-minute pitch, and then the audience got to vote. So you see this picture here on the right with everybody on their phones. People were voting right through an app, right through their website, and then the winners were selected. And actually, the winners were part of the Voice Fellowship with me, and they would like to put together a teacher leadership summit for Michigan, just as they're doing across the country. So it was just an exciting chance to see teachers who have very innovative ideas, who, you know, want a chance to be given the means to develop that. And there's also a teacher exchange program that's been used throughout Michigan that they'd like to implement in Oakland County, and some of the teachers that were part of that slam are working on putting that together. So just so many things that, so many great things that came out of McCall. I also got to present, and my presentation topic was Think Like a Teacherpreneur. So that's a pretty new term to me, but it's one that I'm fascinated with. And really, the core definition of teacherpreneur is being able to lead from a classroom. And that's something that I feel very strongly about, and I know so many other teachers who would like to do more by, while staying connected to kids. So that's the whole idea about teacherpreneurship, and I want teachers to realize that there is this whole world of teacher leadership outside of their classroom that exists, and if they can get involved in Twitter, and if they can get involved in different conferences, then they become part of that, and it makes them feel valuable, and it encourages them to do more and become even better. So I encourage teachers to have business cards. I encourage them to develop websites, not for their classrooms, while those are important and they should have those. They should also have them for themselves, to, to be able to share and promote what they are experts at and, you know, what they can bring value to. So I got some amazing response from that, and many teachers who have begun that process of being teacherpreneurs. I got to spend the day at Lampier High School, and, you know, I'm an elementary person, so anytime I can see high school in action, I find it fascinating. And this was a great experience. They're doing some amazing things at Lampier, and I got connected to it because a former Galileo member is a teacher there and invited me to see what they're up to. So I really, really enjoyed their audiovisual classes, and they were developing some really great TV programming that the students run themselves and develop and be able to share with the other students. I also really liked this because it's, again, going back to that different classroom design. They got rid of all their chairs in certain classrooms and moved towards, you know, research-based furniture. I got to attend and speak at the Michigan PTA Conference, and so this is the president right here. And that was a nice chance to connect to parents and to be able to share with them the same messages that I've been sharing with teachers, educators, and even sometimes policymakers across the state. One thing that really caught my interest when I was there was, there was a representative from the Attorney General's Office who shared information about the Okay to Say program, and just talked about this very easy and effective way for kids, or really anyone, to be able to submit confidential tips about bullying, or about, you know, any problems that kids might be facing, like suicide, or things that they might be struggling with, so that someone can intervene and help the situation. So of course, it's something I'm. standards so that they see them for the valuable things that they are and not the things that, you know, Kathleen spoke about, you know, the misinformation that is out there. Some teachers from MischEd, which is, you know, just kind of a connection of people through Twitter, they put together something called an Idea Slam. And they invited educators, you know, who could buy a ticket for $20 and be part of this fun night. And they had people who submitted ideas that could, you know, promote teacher leadership. And they selected finalists. The finalists got to do a pitch while we were there, a two-minute pitch. And then the audience got to vote. So you see this picture here on the right with everybody on their phones. People were voting right through an app, right through their website. And then the winners were selected. And actually, the winners were part of the Voice Fellowship with me. And they would like to put together a Teacher Leadership Summit for Michigan, just as they're doing across the country. So it was just an exciting chance to see teachers who have very innovative ideas, who, you know, want a chance to be given the means to develop that. And there's also a Teacher Exchange Program that's been used throughout Michigan that they'd like to implement in Oakland County. And some of the teachers that were part of that slam are working on putting that together. So just so many things that, so many great things that came out of McCall. I also got to present. And my presentation topic was Think Like a Teacherpreneur. So that's a pretty new term to me, but it's one that I'm fascinated with. And really, the core definition of teacherpreneur is being able to lead from a classroom. And that's something that I feel very strongly about. And I know so many other teachers who would like to do more while staying connected to kids. So that's the whole idea about teacherpreneurship. And I want teachers to realize that there is this whole world of teacher leadership outside of their classroom that exists. And if they can get involved in Twitter and if they can get involved in different conferences, then they become part of that. And it makes them feel valuable. And it encourages them to do more and become even better. So I encourage teachers to have business cards. I encourage them to develop websites, not for their classrooms, while those are important and they should have those. They should also have them for themselves, to be able to share and promote what they are experts at and, you know, what they can bring value to. So I got some amazing response from that and many teachers who have begun that process of being teacherpreneurs. I got to spend the day at Lampier High School. And, you know, I'm an elementary person. So anytime I can see high school in action, I find it fascinating. And this was a great experience. They're doing some amazing things at Lampier. And I got connected to it because a former Galileo member is a teacher there and invited me to see what they're up to. So I really, really enjoyed their audiovisual classes. And they were developing some really great TV programming that the students run themselves and develop and be able to share with the other students. I also really liked this because it's, again, going back to that different classroom design. They got rid of all their chairs in certain classrooms and moved towards, you know, research-based furniture. I got to attend and speak at the Michigan PTA Conference. And so this is the president right here. And that was a nice chance to connect to parents and to be able to share with them the same messages that I've been sharing with teachers, educators, and even sometimes policymakers across the state. One thing that really caught my interest when I was there was there was a representative from the Attorney General's Office who shared information about the Okay to Say program and just talked about this very easy and effective way for kids, or really anyone, to be able to submit confidential tips about bullying or about, you know, any problems that kids might be facing, like suicide, or things that they might be struggling with, so that someone can intervene and help the situation. So of course, it's something I'm very passionate about, what I'm excited to do today. Funny enough, I went right from the PTA Conference in Lansing and drove to Grand Rapids for the Michigan Reading Association Conference. So March is a big conference month. And this was also my first time. And again, you know, as somebody who's been interested in learning and growing and wanting to be out there and learn from other teachers and experts, I continue to be surprised at how many teachers have never been to these things. But I think there's a lack of opportunity or a lack of understanding of how they can be able to participate in those while still being in a classroom. You know, so where does the funding come from? Where does the flexibility come from? You know, how do they get a substitute? So I would like to streamline those practices and make them more visible and more transparent to teachers so that the people who really want to take part in these amazing experiences can and not to have to be in a specific role like I am to go. But I got to see Jan Richardson, who's an expert in guided reading. I saw my little friend pause there. And next year's Reading Association Conference will be in Detroit and is the 60th anniversary. So that was one way that they were promoting that. One highlight for me was being able to see Christopher Paul Curtis, who is the author of The Watson's Go to Birmingham. So I got to see him in person. And they did an interview with him. And then we got to watch the film, which was an awesome experience as well. And then, as my first time as an attendant, I was also a presenter. So I got to present on a reading instruction package that focuses on metacognition and reading comprehension skills for students. I've done a lot of traveling. So the next week, I was in St. Joseph, Michigan, to attend the Andrews University Teaching and Learning Conference. So that was mainly for their teachers or student teachers that were preparing to be teachers. And so that was another fun experience, to be able to speak to, you know, our future generation of teachers. And my message was very similar, for them to be thinking about the idea of teacherpreneurship before they ever even step foot in a classroom. So that once they do, they'll be able to fulfill their, you know, professional development desires while still staying close to the classroom. So we stop losing our strongest teachers. Diary of a Real Bully continues to be on tour. So I've really enjoyed doing several author visits throughout the state and being able to work with kids of all different age levels, from kindergarten to middle school. And actually, we're still continuing to be international because this is Marvin Tamingadad, if I'm saying that correctly, who is the State Teacher of the Year for Saipan in the Northern Mariana Islands. And he is sharing that book with his students as well. So we continue to travel to many different places around the world with that message. Some other places I've done author visits are Great Oaks Elementary in Anchor Bay, William Ford Elementary in Dearborn, Dublin and Glengarry Elementaries in Wild Lake, and Leo Elementary in Middleville. And I have several scheduled in the next few weeks as So this is my favorite part of my presentation today. However, forgive me if I get a little emotional. Last month, I mentioned that the University of Phoenix awarded each Teacher of the Year with a Teaching It Forward Scholarship to be able to pass on to someone in need. So this family here is the Nathan family. They're a family from my school. Sorry. You can see here that they have four beautiful daughters. And in the last month, the Nathan father was in a tragic accident where he was working on his car. And the car fell on him. And he's now in critical condition. And things don't look well. So it was amazing to be in the position to be able to reach out to this mom, who is a single mother at this time, and who has chosen to stay home with her four children for, you know, for the last, you know, probably 15 years now because her daughter's in high school. And is now faced with a future where she doesn't have any income. And she doesn't have as much work experience that she'd like to be able to provide for her kids. So I'm honored to be able to award this full scholarship for an entire degree, which is worth $40,000, to this mother, who would like to go into the home healthcare or nursing field so that she can give back to the people who have taken such good care of her husband. So forgive me as I tried to make it through that. But it's a thrill and an honor. And I know it's something she values and appreciates. So just yet, one more amazing thing that being in this position has allowed me to do. So I'm grateful again. Thank you.
Thank you, Melanie. Marty, now you have the task of following that.
Sorry.
Thanks, Melanie.
You always bring tears to our eyes too, Marty, but for different reasons.
Thank you.
Well, I'll try to keep this brief. Because the legislature is just back this week for the first time since their, since their break. There are a couple meetings, committee meetings scheduled. One this morning, the Senate Education Committee took up for testimony only the Senator Pavlo bill on educator effectiveness. Not sure what the plan is as far as moving it. But they did take testimony. It was split, some support, some in opposition. And the House Education Committee meeting just put out its agenda for Thursday, 9 o'clock. There are two bills, one that would allow for half credit of personal economics or financial literacy to account for the economics credit in the Michigan merit curriculum. And the second one is the Senate, Senate Bill 139, Colbeck, which would allow for certain fundraising activities during school hours. So those, those bills are up. The legislative committee, this Boris Legislative Committee meeting on March 3rd, April 3rd, whatever, April 3rd, we discussed many things. Not so much bills, because it was, because they weren't really acting. But there are two statements that the committee members have developed. And I will throw it over to Cassandra for discussion and action.
Kathleen or Lupi, would you like to introduce the first one, since you guys drafted this?
Can I introduce it? We all know that this resolution, the proposed proposal on the ballot on May 5th, just a short time from now, was the road proposal. But the road proposal also includes funding for, replaces funding that would be taken away from, under the gas tax that we now pay. The money is replaced and a little bit added for schools, for public education, which I think is very important to us. And I think that it's, it's critical that we, I think it's incumbent upon us as an elected body, a state Board of Education, which is purported to public education, to support this proposal, even though it's not 100% perfect, but nothing is. There are, there are things wrong with it. And maybe it shouldn't have been done this way, but it is done this way. And there's no alternative at the moment. The possibility of a better alternative seems practically zero to nothing.
Minus zero.
So I, I would move that we support the following statement.
And I second it.
The State Board of Education supports Proposal 15-1. It would protect Michigan schools from severe cuts in revenue and provide needed stability for education. It also would help safeguard our families and children who depend on safe roads for transit to school. We believe passage of this proposal would provide significant benefit to our state. And I should say that this, this language came as a result of several drafts, including, I think, the final wording from Eileen, which was very helpful.
Well, all I did was take everybody else's wording and just.
You tweaked it, which made it much better.
Right. It was very good wording. It was easy to do that.
So, thank you.
And I seconded, again.
Moved by Kathleen and supported by Lupi. Any discussion?
Thank you.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same?
No.
Maybe, I don't know, do we need to do a?
I have six ayes and two nays.
Okay. You're good with that?
Thank you very much.
By the way, I really appreciate this from the board. Because even when there's little differences, right now, I think it's just important to be on record. And I would cite, yesterday, we talked about this at Ed Alliance. And I think it was just clicking in with some of the associations that it's not just about potentially the $300 million in new money. It's potentially the drastic cuts that will come because there isn't another option at this point. But, but there's reason, as you said, that this is anything but perfect. But it's, I'm on a call every Monday to try to, it's looking tough right now. It certainly looks tough.
Well.
Yes, ma'am.
We're surely working hard in my area.
You led that. You led that.
Yes. We're going to canvas. Oh, we're doing different things. But we'll see.
Well, thank you. Now there's a second one.
The second one is simply a statement. And we're, we actually drafted the statement before we realized that the Coalition was going to be here today. So it's certainly timely that we have this. And it's just a state, simple statement saying that we applaud the Coalition for the future of Detroit schoolchildren, for their hard work and dedication. The Board acknowledges the report and its recommendation and urges the Governor and the Legislature to give these recommendations full consideration.
Is that a motion?
I move that we support the statement.
Is there support for discussion?
Okay, go ahead.
Second.
I have a friendly amendment. We, throughout our discussion with the committee that came to speak to us, we, everybody used command. We commend you. We commend you. And I think commend sounds more powerful than applause. So I would like to offer that friendly.
That's fine with me.
I would just say, it was very helpful to have the folks come. And I think people heard pretty clearly, I trust, the sentiments of the individual board members about their commendation and encouragement of embracing the recommendations. So I think this statement, as amended, is, is good. And one, if we all can agree on it, it's very helpful to put forward.
I personally, I personally don't think it says anything. I mean, it's just saying, thank you for working hard and look at it. I mean, I think with all of the work that went in, and a way to really respect the work that was done is to support some of the conclusions and the recommendations. I, it's, so I mean, it's sort of a nice thing to say, but it, to me, it's, it's not really instructive. It's just saying, I guess, please read it. So I guess, you know, one of the things, I, you know, I, you know, would encourage the Governor to, I would, to adopt the recommendations put forward by, and I mean, maybe that's too difficult to get passed here. Or maybe, maybe this is all we can do in this period of time. But I would at least like it to be revisited, where we look at the specific recommendations, since it's so new to us, and, you know, give it some careful consideration.
Lupi and then John.
I think you're right. But, and we discussed that at the legislative meeting. And we came to the conclusion that if this document here is going to be looked at by all the different principles, and it's going to be changed and tweeted, and it's going to be gone over a lot. So we cannot say, okay, do this, do that at this particular point. You're right. We cannot do anything but we felt this, because this document is not concrete and whole, and this is going to be it. We don't know what's going to happen to this document. So we, we're making a statement. So we go on record as we're supportive. We commend you. You know, we hope for the best. And then maybe in the future, we can make something more concrete.
Oh, yeah, is that the, it's kind of crunch time. I'm sorry.
John, and then Kathleen.
Sorry.
I'm, like you, I certainly support an even stronger statement that we embrace the report, support the bulk of the recommendations, and encourage the Governor and Legislature to do the same. I appreciate whatever the committee discussion was that didn't get to as strong a statement, but came to a unified statement of encouragement, basically, for full attention to these recommendations. If, if, if we thought after today's discussion, we could make a stronger statement, and we could make it together without a lot of debate or disharmony or split vote, that would be, certainly, I'm for that. I think people heard, that's what I was trying to say. I think people heard loud and clear where we're coming from as a set of individual board members. And the statement becomes less important than what we just did, in my view. But I'm supportive of any strengthening that we want to do. I just also want to try to keep us together in as much as possible.
And that's what we do.
Right. I respect that.
I don't know if the time of state, this was made in knowledge of what the report was. I'm sorry.
Kathleen, yes, ma'am.
I was going to say, I agree with Michelle. I would like to see a stronger statement in support of the actual recommendations. Granted, other people are going to look at it. But we could look at it and say we support it. But I don't know if we could get the support for that.
I can, I am fine with this statement. And I cannot go beyond this. We are a board for the entire state. We have not been part of their process. I have not, I don't agree with some of the things that they have proposed because they don't fit with what I know of the rest of the state or the finances. It doesn't mean that it may not happen. But I personally have no interest in going through their report and choosing things that I support and don't support. I really want it to go to the people who will have the final say on that, which is the Legislature and the Governor. And to go through it and start trying to either dismantle it or, you know, say, this is, these are the things we support 90% of it. I'm not in a position to be able to do that. So I'm fine with this. Other than that, I can't do.
I'm in concurrence.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah. Well, I think, I mean, the role of the Board is not to wait for the Legislature to make a decision on oversight of education. I think it takes leadership and making, taking a position or trying to take a position on what we think will work. And this is not just a Detroit plan. This is a plan that is for schools in deficit and communities in urban districts across the state to be a bullet point for that. I, I don't want to just say, well, it's really the Legislature's role on education policy and not our role on education policy, to make better education policy recommendations. I, I'm kind of, I'm confused about that statement. But, so I, I hear that, that some folks, at least some folks at the table, are willing to take a leadership position and try to be instructive on education policy as it applies to urban districts across the state, based on these recommendations. I hear that others are not comfortable with that. Is that correct? Is that sort of?
Can I, can I process this? Would it be, I'm thinking out loud, Michelle, but would it be, would it be possible to, for the sake of discussion, to move to a vote on this and then consider a second motion and see if you can get support for a second motion? You would at least have, it sounds like you would at least have in your hip pocket a statement of support per this particular language. And then you may have majority support on something else. But I think that's a thought, rather than trying to carve the one that you seem to know have consensus on it.
I tend to agree with Michelle, as you know. We should be providing some leadership. I'm wondering if there's a strengthened statement that could get support from all our colleagues that isn't perhaps as strong as you would like and I would like, Michelle, but is stronger than this one?
Right.
And let me attest, one recommendation would be, we strengthen this by saying, and I heard people say this publicly, we commend the Coalition. The Board embraces the report and its recommendations, and urges the Governor and Legislature to give it thoughtful and full consideration.
So I was thinking, instead of acknowledge support, or is that too strong?
I'm, I'm for that. I'm just looking for language that.
John's wording would be helpful.
Yeah.
Because we are embracing the report. I heard most of us say that and its recommendation. And we really are urging the Governor and Legislature to not only pay attention, in my view, I think they should embrace it as well. But I think that could strengthen it, because acknowledge sounds like, oh, that was nice.
Yeah, right.
But embracing is, is a stronger sentiment. I don't know, do we lose any of our colleagues?
You could gain me by saying, the Board, the Board embraces the report and urges the Governor and Legislature to give these recommendations full consideration. I do not embrace its recommendations because I don't know all of them thoroughly. And I don't understand all their implications. And as they said, within the, within the group, the consortium meeting, they had things they had to drop. So it's unreasonable, I think, for, to put us all in a position where embracing a report that I just got today. I've read the synopsis, but not the. I've read the synopsis, but not the report. And if you left that out, I'd be fine.
Could people go with Eileen's?
So, so it would read, "The State Board of Education commends the Coalition for the future of Detroit schoolchildren for their hard work and dedication. The Board embraces the report and urges the Governor and Legislature to give these recommendations full consideration."
Give its recommendations.
I'm sorry, what?
Give its recommendations full consideration.
Okay.
All right, I move that language.
Okay.
Well, wait a minute, we have a motion on the floor, so, so what, let's vote on the motion.
It's a friendly amendment that I accept.
Okay.
It's not a friendly amendment, it's a change of the whole thing.
Oh, it's a friendly amendment.
You started it with the first word, so.
Well, one word, not the whole thing.
We're changing three words.
This is your wording now.
Yes, we're changing three words. Applaud becomes commend, acknowledges becomes embraces, I'm sorry, we're losing three words, and its recommendations, and then we're changing these to it.
There we go. Very efficient use of the language.
Are you comfortable with that?
That's better.
And I hope it's taken schedule.
Yes.
Yes, yeah. Okay, after we vote, I want to say something, okay?
So, I'm going to, while I have a chance to get.
Are you okay with that?
Aye, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same?
Say aye, by the way.
Yep.
And there was one abstention, so seven.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
What I want to say is that we had this language in our little hands for a few days, and how come nobody had come with all these beautiful words before?
There was, there was some discussion among some of us about strengthening it. We were respecting the discussion you all had in the Legislative Committee. I think what we just discussed with the Coalition members certainly changed or encouraged perhaps a more aggressive, supportive statement, so I think it's pretty straightforward, what's changed.
That's why we have a number of jobs and doing this job.
Things come out when you talk to each other.
Well, we did talk to each other in the Legislative Committee.
And we appreciate.
Well, the whole Board is here now.
Right, and I look back like a full-time job, you know what I mean? I can't get to all of the legislative meetings, and I, you know, I can't always.
Good work, good work, this was.
But we had it in our hands for a few days, we couldn't change it. But anyway, I'm entitled to say how I feel too.
This is better, it's better, so we did it, that's good.
But, well, that's all.
We're good, thank you.
Yeah, we're very good.
I think it's appropriate, and you came to a good conclusion, and get that off this item right now. So, what, let's see, are we done then, Marty, with your?
Yes.
I'm sorry, they were talking a lot about the third grade retention bill that's coming up, do you know any, any way that they're sort of moving with that right now?
We've got no clue that, that bill's.
Oh, okay. Tim Kelly just said they were pushing on it.
They were not, or they were?
Someplace, someplace between that discussion and Board comment is the fact that I was asked to make a presentation on NAEP. You know that I served on the National Assembly of Government Board for eight years, and they were, the charge, there's a third grade reading group that's meeting, that's a joint House and Senate, Marty, you can't help me out, I don't know who else is on it, that's, those are the faces I recognize, seem to be legislative and a few outsiders. So, Paul Stemmer, who is the NAEP State Coordinator, and Vanessa, and I went over to the meeting and made a brief presentation, and they are working their way through the, I urge all of you to watch the House Education Committee meetings, if you can, and look at the agenda. But Florida came up and presented the Foundation for Excellence in Education, came up and presented two Thursdays ago to the House Education Committee, and then I know that they also testified before the Reading Committee. So they're picking their way through other states, including probably Tennessee, where reading initiatives have made a huge difference in the progress of children, and they're trying to find what could work legislatively for the state. This is important work, because we are not part of it, and we're not taking that discussion up here, and so you at least want to be informed as to what the House is doing, because they're very activist on this, as they have been in other areas.
Okay.
And I say that, I mean, we've been doing our, the Department's very active in this area, but not on this, you know, this is a different initiative, so we want to keep track of what the Legislature is thinking and doing, and who they're hearing.
Senator, Chair of Appropriations, who is here, Ben?
Jeff Hansen.
Yeah, so we were just talking, and he was saying, you know, he's being supportive of some of the funding proposals, and funding that supports third grade reading, which is good, and I was saying, that's good, because we all, I think, support third grade reading, if there's the real help that comes to deliver the goods, not just require it, so FYI.
Let me, let me say something about this. We can watch these things on, on government TV, and for, for this Board not to be watching House and Senate meetings when they're aired is an error on our part, because they're, they're getting ahead of us on things that we would like to participate on. The Department is fully engaged, but the Board will not know what's, what's happening, and I, I think it's, I mean, there's no question in my mind that the Department is doing everything they need to, they're telling us what they see, but the nuances of how the discussions go are really important for us, for the way that we think and talk.
I think that's a good word.
Yeah, I mean, I'd love to do that, but I'm, you know, at work all day, but if someone could do a synopsis or something, that would be really helpful.
What I don't know, Ben, Ben, can you watch those afterwards, or are they?
Yes, I was about to say, they're also online, you can stream them afterwards, they record them and put a link up most of the time when they've been recorded, so that's possible to watch them later.
Okay.
After it's already.
We could even, you know, Ben's been great on this, I'm not.
Yeah, that would be really helpful.
Yes, ma'am.
Send the link out.
Or do a highlight reel, or.
If you mind me being.
Big play. All right. It can only be a couple minutes long, you know.
He sends us a link, that would be very helpful. Or we know when they're televised, you know, when are they meeting, I don't know, do they meet on Tuesdays at 10 o'clock, are they televised?
Aha, you have to go into House Government TV and register your email address, and then you get way too many notifications, you erase two-thirds of them, or 90 percent, and then you get the Education Committees.
You can just register strictly for Education.
I didn't know that.
So, I think it would be great if you could do that, but in addition, Ben's been very attentive to this stuff, you've seen his reports are crisp, and they get, and there's, from what you just said today, there's probably a little bit more we could add to that, in terms of synopsis, I don't know about a highlight reel, but, you know, we could do, like the end of March Madness, we could just have a two-minute video with a tearjerker song behind it or something. But short of that, you know, why don't we, we'll try to do that. Some of this is so quick, I mean, we didn't know till last night about the Ed Committee, until then, and suddenly they got an Ed Committee this morning at 8:30. So that's, that's why sometimes, when we know, we'll let you know. And then we'll try to be, we'll get the links for sure, to Kathy's point, and occasionally there is something where we could say, go to two minutes, you know, go to a certain minute on it or something like that. But I want to just acknowledge, I said it two different times, even when Ben was up roaming around, and we're all waving at him, he's kind of roaming around the fountain up there tonight, but, you know, Ben, the team there, Caroline, they, they really work hard on this. I mean, you know, I, these are new folks today, so I let it go, but just because a few of those chairs are new, doesn't mean these relationships haven't existed with their predecessors. So they're building these with new chairs now, which is all appropriate, but they've worked their tails off on this, and, you know, eighty meetings so far, and more to come, and a bunch of hearings, as you know.
Well, I think the third grade reading has come a long way since the introduction of just holding them back.
Right.
They realize that's not going to work.
Right.
So they're, I think they're taking a much more realistic, practical approach, which is encouraging.
Amanda Price is a key person, and I happened to be next to her at a dinner a couple of weeks ago, and she's very thoughtful about this, and I think the more we can help shape the supports being the main thing, it feels less, they feel less of a need to be draconian. Now, there's a couple of groups, you know, watching, they always watch religiously, so I know you're out there, Gary, but they, they feel pretty, they feel pretty strongly about this, and, and they have, you know, appropriate right to try to move this in their direction, but I think the supports are the key.
You know, a small request, they're new, I'm new, so I don't know who was who, or what, are they Senators, or the House, I didn't know who was what, so if we could get a list of the people that were here, and what position they hold, I would be very appreciative.
Put a picture there, too, so you can put a name and a face.
Put a picture, that would help.
This is all going to be, this is all going to be.
Just the ones, just the ones that showed up, we're not going to, the ones that didn't show up, we'll send you a picture, but there'll be a line through it.
Yeah.
No, I want the names of the ones that didn't show up, because those are my friends.
No, in fairness, they, I mean, many were polite and just couldn't make the time work, it wasn't as if they were snubbing us.
But, you know, with this early intervention, we've been work.
Yes, ma'am.
We've been working on early intervention in the Department for a long time. We had Mobleysey that, I forget what it stood for, but it was early intervention.
Years.
And how effective it was, it was working with, with local districts and immediate districts for, just to get started from the very beginning. Now we're talking early, they were talking about kindergarten, now we're talking early childhood, which is even better. But that, but we've been pushing this early intervention for years.
Right.
So, it's not like this is a new thing to us, but it's a new thing to them, because they never thought of it before, and they're not aware that this has been going on for a long time.
And I think you would attest, as I would, I've been around forty years in this, too, that they're having the discussions, I mean, that's a big breakthrough, just the fact that we're talking about these things, even with some of the disagreements. So to your point, it's, we're at action time, finally.
Right, there were a lot of people in the field who were very knowledgeable about this, have been working on it for a long time.
So, any comments from Board members?
Yes.
Uh-oh. I don't mean, uh-oh.
I don't know, there's an area of concern.
Yes.
And it's something that we've been concerned, the Board as a whole has been concerned about it for many years. Carolyn Curtin was a champion of it, and we said we would follow through for her, and now there's been such a horrendous event that happened, that took place in Detroit regarding the two children who were found in the freezer, and whose mother said they were being homeschooled. And people ask me about that, we're talking to people in the community, and they, why don't we, why did we do something about it? I said, "Well, we don't know who's being homeschooled." "What do you mean, you don't know who's being homeschooled?" I said, "There's no requirement in the law that a homeschool parents, that homeschool children have to be registered anyplace. We don't know who is homeschooling, and if they're homeschooling, if they're really doing it, or if they're abusing the children." And it's been a concern of ours for a long time, and people in, are now talking about, some people, anyway, are now talking about, maybe this would be a good time to review our homeschool policies, or lack of saying, the law requires nothing. And I know it's been a hard sell to get it, even the Legislature to even look at it, but it might be worthwhile, I know that we've got a lot of different things on our plate, but it might be worthwhile to put this on the agenda for some, not too distant future, but not, not necessarily tomorrow, but it's an issue that people, people I've told us to are just absolutely astonished. "I can't believe this," they said. "You don't know? Nobody knows?" I said, "No, nobody has to know, unless the parents voluntarily want their children to take music, or participate in sports, or something, they don't have to tell anybody." So.
I remember Kathleen, a few years ago, this was one of those things where I asked Carolyn, before she left the Board, "Is there an issue you care about that you want us to pay some attention to in your last year on the Board?" And she said, "Homeschooling, we don't know what's going on, and we have deliberate public policy that doesn't allow us to collect any basic information, so that they can reenter the school system in some organized way." My thought at the time, and we did a little bit of work into this, is given the anxiety on the homeschooler movement, that somehow some of us are trying to do something to be out to get them, that it would have to be an effort that was like a committee led by Richard, who among us might be the one perceived to be not someone who is an enemy of homeschooling, but someone who's sympathetic. So that was my only thought, was if we could have a, have a look at homeschooling that was somehow led by somebody who clearly is not unsympathetic to homeschooling, or is not out to get them.
That would be very good.
That would be really helpful, and that, Richard, I talked a little bit about this, and it's, it's a very awkward thing, but the, the real reflexive fight back from the homeschool movement that we're somehow trying to police them anew is.
I realize that, I know that's, that was, that will happen, but I think it's something that's worth discussing and raising the issue, maybe the, just, in a sympathetic way, but in a protective way.
But then think about how we might proceed in a way that would be effective, I guess.
What, what is a position of the Department? We don't have a position, nothing.
I mean, there's just no inherent authority on that, but I guess in theory, there could be.
Well, and you all did pull together just the basic facts of the case, our homeschooling law policy is among the most limited, and among all the states. We don't have information about how many, and who, and what learning program they have at all, so we're flying blind.
Well, I just raised it to, people should be.
I think it was Richard, and Eileen, and Michelle, or maybe yours was a different topic.
Mine was a different topic.
Do you want to finish this one?
There's discussion on that, sure.
Okay. Michelle, Eileen.
I just wanted to say that the real tragedy with that is that there was no family member and no family friend who, in the community, who, no neighbor, who, who stood up and said, "Where are those children?" And it's, it's not, I mean, you know, the homeschooling issue, I'm sympathetic to, but the real problem for me is the community aspect, which is devastating.
I think it was a teacher. It was reported, anyway, that a teacher noticed and tried to bring attention to it.
A teacher, but they were homeschooled.
A teacher, the girl, I guess the 14-year-old girl, and he was interviewed about, and then he was basically sort of brushed off, and nothing was done, and he had made, but there are fathers.
Significant effort, more than just asking. But, yeah, yeah.
So, I have a question, is the authority then, is the parents, that they have the authority to send them to school, or send them to school, report or not report, it's their thing, it's not the government's thing?
I think, correct me if I'm wrong, they, to homeschool your child, you're supposed to deliver the same academic content that we require of all students. There is nothing tied to that, to know if, when, how that happens, we don't even, they don't even have to register that they're homeschooling, anyway, they can just sort of fall off the grid.
So it's the parents' authority, or whatever, that responsibility, or, you know, they take that responsibility?
And, and I mean, I know you mean it, but it should be said, obviously, there are folks that take that very seriously, and do a good job, and come to our high schools, often that's a transition, where they've done it for elementary, and then come to high school very well prepared, but I know we're talking about, obviously, the, the exceptions to that, and how that might be.
I, there's a couple of things I wanted to say. One is that there's Doreen Allen, and there was some legislation that was looking at absenteeism, trying to sort of make a universal understanding of what is absenteeism, and connect with it, doing research, you know, finding out why kids are not coming to school if they fall off the grid, and this was like Mark Corrigan, and, I mean, there was, it was, it was a bipartisan effort, and there was some legislation proposed.
You want to help with that for a moment?
Yeah, well, that's, you know, there's been some transition with leadership with Judge Allen, and now Justice.
I know, yeah, Mary Beth.
That kind of guy taking over, but they're still hopeful to get those bills reintroduced during the session.
Right.
Senator Pavlov, at least last session committed, having additional hearings a session on those bills.
So I'm wondering if there's any way, if there's any way to amend, or to look at those in terms of tracking at least kids who have been in school, like the kids in this case, and then fall off the grid. I mean, I think it's important, and then, you know, they're told homeschool, you know, they might be homeschooled, so we don't have any obligation to follow up. If there's some way to tweak the language, or to address those issues more clearly in the proposed legislation, maybe that's something the Legislative Committee could look at.
Ben, please.
Representative Chang has approached me about, about that legislation, I was in the district that that occurred in, tragedy, and I let her know that Senator Shoemaker's been working on this legislation the last term, and planning on dropping the legislation again this term, and that she should reach out to represent me. She made it because, I'm Senator Shoemaker, because she's more than willing to work on this issue bipartisan. So Representative Chang said that she would do so. Once the legislation is introduced, then we'll be involved, and we can actually look and see what, what the language looks like, and we can move on from there, and of course, I'll let Representative Chang know that Senator Shoemaker introduced the legislation.
No, Stephanie.
And if you have suggestions, of course, we can take those suggestions to the Senator that we worked with there.
Okay. The other thing I just wanted to mention, the second part, is my personal experience with this, when I had foster kids, forgive me if I'm repeating myself, but they were with me, and they were still in the purview of the court, they'd brought them back to the family, but they still were under court orders, the family was, and the family was
not bringing, any, there was nine children, and not one of them were going to school. Matter of fact, one, who I couldn't intervene and save, he's now 25 years old, and he only finished sixth grade because his parents never took him back to school. But anyway, and he's really suffering now because he has a sixth-grade education. But the, so, when I was trying desperately and telling the, the family court and the guardian, guardian at light, family court, even in foster care, when the family has, the referee said, we don't do anything around school attendance, and they completely pulled back. Not my, I don't, we're not here to judge parents based on whether they send their kids to school or not, which I thought was sort of mind-boggling for the court, they're supposed to be looking after the welfare of children. And, and then I also called the truancy office, you have to call the truancy office. So, I'm, I'm calling, I'm calling the Detroit truancy officer, and I get somebody who's working the office, and she says, there's really nobody here to staff, we have no, we have like, we have one person for the whole city, and, and they're probably only homeschooling, and she wouldn't even take my complaint. I had the address, I had information, I had all this, she refused to take my complaint, and she said, they're, I'm sure they're just, they're probably just homeschooling, is what she said. And then I called the Wayne County Prosecutor's Office, because they had some folks there that would prosecute parents, and I didn't want to go that route, I didn't, but I didn't know what else to do, and they threatened to prosecute the parents. And, and the, the foster care agency wouldn't investigate, I'm saying, they're not in school. Oh, no, the parents said we are, they are in school. I'm like, no, they're not in school. But it was just sort of this sort of benign neglect, and sort of people don't want to deal with it for whatever political reasons. And, and it's not just in, in the schools, it's in the justice system, it's like...
You know, I said, I know I sent you all a link, but, and I'm biased, I'm on the board and have been active for years, but the Children's Trust Fund is really an appropriate way to try to help get at this in the largest sense, in every area where this is a problem, because it's, it's certainly in the areas you're talking about, and it's areas beyond. I was a new superintendent 25 years ago, and the biggest surprise to me was I kind of had a stereotypical view, maybe created by media or movies or TV, of what an abusive parent might be like, and then you find out there in every kind of situation, small numbers, thank God, but in every kind of situation one could imagine. But, you know, the media projects, you know, certain things, and you find out. So, what I'm getting at is this, I have a lot of faith in them and their fundraising and other things being a way to try to look at the bigger picture on some of this stuff, and not, not, unimportant are these issues, but that's, just for your, commend to you, that's a way to also participate and try to get change.
So, not to belabor the subject, but since it's brought up, one of the things that we've also looked at is from an educator's point of view, and in this case, where you had an educator that, you know, tried to follow through, and we've seen other incidents and very tragic incidents in Saginaw, you know, elsewhere, but looking at secondary trauma for educators and those folks who, you know, work with children, and that's a huge issue, and I, I don't think that we do enough around that, that, so, thinking and considering how we can address that as well.
That's a really good point. My daughter, her first year of teaching, I don't, I don't, I hope she wouldn't mind me saying this, but she, a young man committed suicide, and she could not, it was her first year, and these were issues well beyond anything she was involved in, she had him one period a day in a high school class, but that, that feeling, first of all, you have, in general, you have very caring people that are in the profession to begin with. So, when you add to that, trauma's a good word, I hadn't quite thought about it that way, but it's... And Richard, you have a different topic, so we'll...
Yes, I just wanted to report, having attended March 21st and 24th, the NASB legislative meeting, frankly, I was surprised that I didn't see Kathleen there, because I know you're a...
No, it's the first one I've missed in all these years.
But really enjoyed getting to know my colleague Pamela here and, and Ben as well, just the, I found the presentations to be very helpful, it talked a lot about the renewal of the ESA, and had the opportunity to visit my congressman Dylan's, Dylan Dingell's office and Senator Stabenow's with, with Pam, and appreciate the board making it possible for us to, to attend this.
I was, as I think I texted you, I was starting to get on the plane and literally got sick, and it's a good thing I didn't get on the plane, and then that night, they were texting me, because they were ready to, in a very unkind way, roast me in the beginning, just before Todd's presentation, so dodged a bullet there.
Yes, I'm sorry you missed it, right?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
Well, the, we didn't mention it, but the, the Senate Education Committee, Health Committee, Health, Education, Labor...
Health, yeah.
Meeting today, taking testimony on their newly introduced bipartisan revisions, reauthorization of ESEA. It has some good things in it, I think, from our point, from the state's point of view, maybe some things we don't like, but like everything else...
As you said earlier...
Which is a bipartisan, that they got together was really quite wonderful, I think.
Yeah.
So, we might, we can make recommendations on what we think about it, so we should be paying attention to it. I sent you the stuff I got from the, or in S. Maryland, to send you the stuff I got from NASB.
Good, so any other thoughts? Then consider ourselves adjourned. Good meeting, thank you all.